Have a pledge of allegiance. Will you lead us, Mr.?
I'll choose probably.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks. All in the roll. Member Scully.
Here.
Member Dickerson.
Yeah.
Member Shufell.
Here.
Member Keough, present, and Member York is absent today, excused. So we have a forum. Next order of business is to review and approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes of July 17.
Your second.
My second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is election of a vice chairman. However, one of our members is not here tonight, and so I'm going to ask that we defer that to the next meeting or to the next meeting when all members of the board are present to help us make that decision. There will be a number of occasions tonight for public comment, but I just would like to just suggest that we're going to limit public comment to two minutes per commenter and also ask you to restrict your comments to the issue that's before the planning board. So not everything that is going to be considered with respect to certain applications is going to be considered tonight. So we'll let you know the things that we're considering tonight, and then if you want to speak, you can speak on those issues, please. First item we'll consider is PLPC 2022-0083. Is the applicant a representative present? No.
Kings Landing.
Kings Landing.
We'll go on to it.
It's a call.
You can do it. Just go on to the next.
No, there's a, I know there's.
Is Andrea here?
Andrea and Barbara.
Set it aside.
All right, I'm going to text you. Yo, I don't know.
Why don't you, why don't you choose another item, see if it will come back.
Yeah, all right, we'll move on to another item and come back to that. Hopefully, the representative will be here or someone to speak on the proposal. Barb. We'll go to PLPC 2024-0059, 84th Street. Is there a representative of that applicant here? Striking out. 84th Street. We'll try 2025-0018, 249 River Street. Thank you, come on down.
Evening, everyone. We're here for the National Bridge Recovery Project, returning to the planning board. This is the National Bridge Proposed Utility Thermal Energy Network Project. The project includes the construction of a new 1,400 square foot building that will serve as the energy center building for the thermal energy project.
Yes, thank you. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Allison Phillips, and I'm here with the law firm Yom Summer Local Council of National Bridge.
Thank you.
We also have representatives of National Bridge Architectural and she's very familiar as well.
Okay, welcome.
We last appeared before the planning board at last month's meeting where we had discussed the meetings we've attended before the Troy Review Board, also the variants that we obtained before from the zoning board of appeals in order to waive your requirement to have that airline site thirty foot spacing between the buildings down to the water plant. When we appeared before the planning board last month, we also received a waiver of the requirement or the prohibition in the city water plant facility in the city of Orlando to give its location of critical infrastructure. The planning board even received an exception to make that one. It was a planning board waiver that we obtained before this board last month, in addition to the barriers we received from the TPA.
Okay.
So we've been at this since April. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from the planning board, recommendations from the Troy Review Commission. We've incorporated into those recommendations into revised project plans. The last year here before the planning board last month, there was a suggestion that we could add some additional exterior lighting to the building, both for aesthetic reasons and for security purposes. So we went back and did propose some additional lighting on the building to present tonight. We also appeared last week before the store review commission, since we didn't have that lighting on the building. We first appeared before them, and we did receive their sign off that they were good with both the overhead fixture that we proposed for the front entry and the window sponses on the sides of the building. So we're here tonight just to present those changes to the planning board, answer any questions the board has, of course, receive any comment from members of the public.
I think we might as well address this right off, since you're talking about the lighting. The staff has expressed some concern about the rear lighting arrangements. Have you discussed with staff any of that?
When we, when we were before the historic review commission last week, they did suggest that the planning board, they want to see some additional lighting on the rear of the building. I think currently we had two window sponses proposed at the rear of the building. We did take that suggestion back, and we have to kind of look at how we could add additional light sponses to the rear of the building, something that the planning board expressed tonight that they would be interested in.
I don't know if the planning board has particular ideas on that, separate from what staff wants. Do any of you have comments on that point?
No, I think that they have addressed what we were looking for from the last meeting.
Okay.
Mainly street scape, security, and what abandoned window is. I think we went through that too, right? So we're good on that. No mirrored glass.
Yeah.
And so I think they've done a little bit of their work here.
Okay, all right.
Concerned with.
Derek, I'm sure that mic is working at least.
So I think the staff concern is that the rear of the building is how the lighting would impact that staircase, which is sometimes used for less than legal activities, and it might tend to discourage something up there.
I think in the interim repairs that they've done down there, the staircase is now, I think, closed off, but I agree.
It is closed off, but it's still open.
It could be a hazard to, you know, get back there, for sure.
So was there a foot candle recommendation from?
Evan Gallatelli with Cyberton Revosu Architects, architect on the job.
Pull that mic closer to you and then speak a little louder, please.
Evan Gallatelli, architect with Cyberton Revosu Architects. Regarding the photometrics, we worked with a consultant, lighting consultant. We provided the minimum suggested foot candles for security purposes, which is one. The current photometrics drawing that we presented before HRC showed two foot candles on the back of the building, doubling the light fixture. If you so wish, we would be able to effectively double the foot candles of that. So just to re-circle back, security purposes were met from our photometrics consultant. We can increase that if needed.
That'd be satisfactory.
The staff, the staff comment referred to the foot candles, that an increase in the foot candles might be warranted.
So would doubling it be sufficient from the staff perspective?
I mean, I think if you're all right with it, you could leave it to be worked out with city staff during the building permit process.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone else want to present? You're satisfied. Okay, thank you. Let's see if the public has any comment. Thank you. Members of the public, anyone want to comment on this proposal? Okay, if not, we'll turn it over to board for the board discussion. Any board comment or questions? No. Okay, so then is there a motion with respect to the application?
So did we schedule a hearing for this? This, is this the public hearing?
This is.
So we're a final now.
We're the final.
So I'd like to make a motion and give a final approval to this project.
I second.
Would you consider making the motion with subject to rear lighting consultation with staff?
Yeah, I think we could, we could make it subject to that. I think that the, you know, building department, the builder, they have this.
We're referring regardless.
Yeah. If you're okay with it.
Feel free to.
If you're okay with it.
Your motion, Jim.
Okay, so we can make it subject to lighting in the back that doesn't affect the, you know, the stakes of the rear building either. More for security, but also, you know, we don't have big light packs setting down the park either, until we do the park. So that would be the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you all.
The next item we'll take is 2025-0041, 310 Spring Avenue. Is there anyone here representing the applicants? 310 Spring Avenue. Are we here on the wrong night? Okay. We'll go back to some of the earlier ones. Is there anyone here for Kings Landing? On his way. Is there anyone here for?
84th Street.
84th Street. He's on his way.
I would, if they're not here, then you got to.
Not here.
Push it to the back or scrub it, anyone.
Let's, well, let's wait.
Yeah. Maybe if they're here at the end of the night.
Yeah.
And 249 River Street.
We just did it. Just did that.
So.
Maybe that's up there at the bottom.
Okay, I guess we'll go to number two. 74 New Turnpike. The applicant present, yes. Representative.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Andy Brick, Brick Law Firm. Karen Maginowski from Bowler Gulf Street Developers LLC. Anthony Cassell, Charles Cassell with us this evening, members of the LLC. This is the proposed eighty-six tiny homes at Leonard Hospital. You've seen this project before. We have made some improvements based upon prior comments. We received the staff comments last evening, and we are prepared to go through both the notes and the staff comments that we received here this evening. Karen will take the bulk of them because they're more engineering related. I just wanted to touch upon the staff notes and recommendations regarding section 285-80N, applicant to propose new development intensity guidelines slash standards. Our bulk standards, because as you know, this was a PDD, our bulk standards are included in the site plan that we had provided. And in addition, the final site plan that's before this evening has all the setbacks and measurements and widths called out, and that's what our set of bulk standards would be. So you do have that information. We also provided that information in our original PDD application to the city council. The January 10th letter that I authored to Commissioner Colburn also addresses that question. So those, that information is in the record, both on the site plan and in the letter to Commissioner Colburn. We can, more than willing to provide it in an additional document. We can definitely do that, but I just wanted to let you know that the information has already been provided.
Andy, on that point, so what you're saying is by looking at your site plan, we can tell what your density proposal is now, but is that what you're proposing for the PDD forever?
Correct.
When you spell it out in that way, or you're just by putting these properties where you're putting them, you're saying that is the plan?
Correct, that is the plan. That is the site plan that we're proposing.
But you're willing to articulate it as a plan that's applicable to the project irrespective of how it may be developed in the future?
Correct. And, and if you want a separate document where we lay out, here's the setbacks, here's the road width, here's the parking width, here's the separation between buildings. We can do that in a separate document, more than willing to do that, but that information is already part of the plan.
I understand. So I think, I think that the planning department would be more comfortable if we had a separate document.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
And then on the other one, 79 E1C, description of the intended market structure. We've stated on the record throughout, as well as in the letter to Commissioner Colburn, we are a fifty-five plus rental product, market rate rental product. So it will be fifty-five and above, and it will be rental at market rate. But again, we can provide a separate document if you want that, a separate document, but it is in the record. We've, we've identified that a number of times. So those were my two issues to address. I'll let Karen speak to the rest of the notes and the staff reports.
All right, so is she going to address the place making item?
Yes, yes. And, and I think when you, when we get through this, you'll see we're able to address all of these concerns. I think we'd be in a position where we'd ask you to consider an approval this evening, knowing that there may be a number of conditions attached to it, such as providing those separate documents I just mentioned. But first, let's, let Karen address the staff comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Karen Maginowski from Bowler Engineering for the record. Nice to see everyone again. It's been a bit of a long process to get here since we started the PDD, which we now have approval for. So just as a refresher, when we started here, we had about a hundred tiny homes. We had a lot of parking, and then we had too little parking. And then we found that what we felt was happy medium based on feedback from this board and from city council as well. So where the project ended up was eighty-six tiny homes, as a reminder, ranging from five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, or eight hundred square feet per home, as outlined on our chart on the site plans, that has a key with those sizes and where those homes are located. We ended up with about one and a half parking spaces per home based on the feedback we received here. So there's a hundred and thirty-seven spaces as part of the project. The layout has stayed generally the same, but we were able to move things further apart. So in general, there's a minimum of eleven feet of spacing to meet building code between the homes. And as a reminder, we're viewing this as a deconstructed apartment building rather than one tall structure where people have further to go from their cars, up an elevator, multi-story, things like that. We've broken it down into these individual units with a little bit of green space in between. So that's the intent due to the market that we're targeting. So that's the minimum spacing we have. It's also the minimum setback from property lines is eleven feet. And then in the center island area, where there was a concern both from the board and fire department that things were a little tight, we were able to stagger the homes, as you can see, which should also be more aesthetically pleasing, so they're not in two straight lines. And we were able to get a minimum of thirteen all the way up to twenty-one feet between those two center rows of homes where there's green space. We've also added porches to the homes, so you'll see that on some of those as well to accompany that for some. And we've gone ahead and done our full design plans from a site design standpoint for the project. So that included going out and doing soils testing to analyze what's there and to meet the criteria for DEC and for the city stormwater requirements. So we do have a stormwater management area on the north side as originally planned, as well as on the east side as originally planned, and the watershed is split up accordingly. We did encounter good soils, so that was another benefit of the explorations that we've done over the past few months. So we are proposing infiltration practices there. There's pipe network throughout the road, systems in the site to convey it, as well as sheet flow. And another benefit is that it, we are not sending it to the city system within the roadway. It is being handled on site. There's no direct pipe tie-ins to New Turnpike Road. From a utility standpoint, we've designed all the water and sewer infrastructure throughout based on city requirements and guidelines and getting it to tie in as it did today with the hospital and what was prior a hundred forty-bed hospital is now eighty-six new efficient homes. So there's a significant reduction in sewer flows that are there. We did receive some feedback on utilities and engineering, all things that we can address if it were needed to be a condition of approval. We see no concerns there. And we've also coordinated with the fire department today because we've been back and forth with them. So some of their comments at the beginning of the memo were the fire hydrant spacing every three hundred feet and details. So we did have them send us that detail. We have, so we have that. They are okay with the spacing of the hydrants. They do want one at each entrance road frontage, not a problem. We, we agree to that. They didn't have concerns with the spacing of the homes when we talked to them today, or any congestion on site. As a reminder, we provided a TDMP, which flagged no issues. We talked about the density of the development. So everything is either on the plan and or within the application as required. We are reducing the impervious by over twenty-five percent from what's there today. So we're adding green space, which is another benefit for the project. As a reminder, there's a recreation area in the northeast corner away from the road. It's a little over three thousand square feet now, and we're agreeable to discuss the amenities that are within that area that would be appropriate, such as picnic tables for people to gather. And I think with that, the last thing to note is if they want to add a sign by the road later, they would get the necessary permits for that. I think that was the last comment within the memo. So as Andy mentioned, we're excited to be back to hopefully get to a final approval and address any comments or questions that the board has. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. There are two dump sites, both on the north end, am I correct? There's nothing on the south end or?
The two dumpster enclosures are on the center of the north end and then the outer edge of the northeast. Yes.
So you feel that with eighty-six tiny homes, that's going to be enough with, are you having a recycling dumpster and a regular garbage dumpster in each one?
Yes.
Okay, so the area that I see, starting with the As and then it goes the Cs, Ds, and the perimeter. So that's, everything in front of that is a sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, so then you go to the middle, and you have a sidewalk that goes in front of the houses. But if you want to go this way, there's no circle that is going to bring that sidewalk all the way around the middle?
That's correct, the way it is now. If the board would like a connection between those two rows, we have room to add it on the south end.
So you're fifty-five and over. You're not guaranteed that everybody is going to have a car. So what I'm assuming is everybody is responsible for putting their own garbage in the dumpsters?
Correct.
So somebody all the way to D on this top right corner has to, if they don't have a car, has to walk all the way over to that dumpster to put their garbage in?
Correct.
Um, I think in the middle, you still have way too many houses. I had asked Mr. Brick a long time ago if you got rid of your As and Bs, would Cs and Ds suffice to do what you need to do financially? And he said, no. Wasn't feasible. I don't know if he did numbers on it or whether he's just saying that, no, it's not going to work.
The owners have run the numbers even recently ahead of this meeting, and eighty-six is the minimum.
So eighty-six is the minimum number of houses you can have in here to make it feasible for you to build?
Correct. They had planned out a hundred.
I still think it's too many houses. I don't know what anybody else hear things, but I think the middle is way too congested. I would like to see the sidewalks connected. So everybody, I mean, if you want to take a walk, if you want to walk around the center, you want to be able to walk a circle. As far as the recreation area goes, I think some picnic tables and maybe picnic tables under a pavilion. Maybe a couple of grills. And how many of your houses are going to have porches?
That's still to be confirmed. About a quarter of them do now.
Quarter of them. So you're moving from an apartment where you're looking at four walls, and you're going into a tiny home where you have no place to sit outside?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get a porch on most of them. Yes, we can add that.
And I think your first proposal had some of them with garages. You've taken all the garages off?
We had example architecture.
Right.
To show the look of the homes, but the intent was not to have the garage. There are no garages.
There's no garages on any of these. Okay. I still think there's too many houses, too many homes in here. I think you might need more garbage places for people that don't have cars that are going to have to walk to get to these dumpsters. If you took a couple of houses out, you might be able to do that. Are you going to have somebody there twenty-four hours a day, or is it just going to be during the weekdays? Is there anybody going to be living there, taking care of this, or it's just going to be somebody coming in on occasion?
The owner will maintain it and come in, not twenty-four seven. He'll come in for maintenance.
Okay, and the, the people that are on turnpike, and you're putting houses behind them, is there going to be a fence separating
Yes.
those properties, a tall enough fence?
Yes.
Six foot?
Yes. That's on our proposed plan.
On the last note, does the applicant, are you okay with providing an operations and maintenance plan prior to a CO being issued for the site? I mean, you're planning to own the, the roadways there and the utilities within this district, right?
Are you talking for everything, not just stormwater?
I would say just some, some type of management plan of, of what's, you know.
We can do that.
So if you connected the center with sidewalks on each end, you're right on the roadway, correct?
We could put the sidewalk up against the homes.
So your very first B on that middle section in the bottom is, how do you put a sidewalk there?
We can fit one.
Right in somebody's backyard. I mean, I don't see any space for these people that don't want to live in an apartment to have space to even come outside and do anything. Are you going to have shrubs, plants, flowers, anything?
The target market is people who would want an apartment, but have more accessibility so that their parking is right outside of their unit. And then if they do want outdoor amenities, it's in the recreation area.
There's no way you can take more homes out here.
There's not.
And is there anywhere you can put more? And is there anywhere you can put more? Garbage bins?
We could look at that.
I think you'd need some at the other. End, not just at the north end, you need some on the south end. I don't believe that everybody in this complex is going to have a car.
We could include one on the south or move one further down.
So how often are these garbage receptacles going to be? Cleaned out?
That has to be coordinated with the waste management company, assuming once a week. Depends on their schedule.
Once a week for all of these houses? Uh, I don't see it, I'm sorry.
Suggesting, were you suggesting just moving one set to the other end or adding an additional set?
We can move one to the other end.
Or me?
We would move one to the other end.
But still have the same number?
Yes.
You think that's enough?
I'm not really sure how big the receptacles are or how much garbage is going to be produced. So it's kind of hard to tell, it's, it's kind of be kind of hard to tell. Two receptacles are enough.
I think because the owner's doing all the maintenance, if they observe something isn't adequate, it can easily be changed or added also.
What's the total occupancy expected?
So.
So there's eighty-five units.
Most will be a single person, some might have two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will we see the plans for these homes eventually?
The building plans, if we get approval here, those will go to the building department. Um, as far as those drawings, we've submitted what the buildings will look like to this board.
I saw the, the one that you have on here, right? There's just one that I saw with a small porch in the.
There's two.
And I brought it up, the second one, the first one didn't come up the second time.
How many houses, uh, in the original plan?
A hundred.
A hundred, so you cut it back quite a bit. I, I like the concessions that you made, uh, widening the roads, um. Emergency vehicle friendly, um, I, I like what you did.
Thank you.
I, I would just note to that, um, in the PDD. In, in the Plan Development District, City Council, i- in the resolution, it mentions the eighty-six home number. So that was included in City Council's approval, essentially, at least a reference to, to it.
So since the PDD approved this, they approved the number of homes that are going to be put in there. So we have nothing to say about that.
I don't know the, I don't know the details, but.
I don't recall whether it was approved as a, I don't recall whether it was approved as an up to or a maximum or an exact number.
I mean, my interpretation is the code generally a- allows for, you know, what reasonable deviations from the, the, the basis of the site plan in the PDD. Or reasonable is, I, I don't know, ten percent maybe for any given offset or distance or number of units. Depends what category you're talking, I would say.
I, I, I just have a problem with you're moving from an apartment, you want to move into a tiny home, you're still looking at four walls. You have no space out there to do anything. Some of them, maybe a quarter of them, you said, are going to have. Majority of them will have porches?
Flat more.
So your smallest homes, will they have a porch? Your five hundred square feet, will that have a porch?
We'll make sure each sized home does.
But not every home.
The majority.
Will have one, but not every home will have one.
We'll try for every, but it'll be the majority.
I mean, who says that everybody wants a porch?
I do.
Patio.
Maybe you want a porch, but maybe I don't want a porch. Maybe I want to live in a house without a porch. Maybe that's what I like. Maybe I like to walk my garbage down to the, down to the dumpster, get some exercise.
But you're gonna have.
You know what I mean, maybe I want to walk in the road. That's all I'm just saying. Another, they're targeting, you know? If people don't want to live there, they don't have to, you know what I mean? They're going to live there because they like it.
The question is, uh, some of the things that were, you know, you've been asked were, with regard to garbage pickup, you, you're going to have an operational plan to maintain the property.
Yes.
So, you know, if you see that there's more garbage, more pickups, just like any other apartment building?
To look nice and function well.
Of course, I mean, you, you don't want to go downhill, you're not going to be able to rent these things. So with that said, you also, there's, there's a thing that I'm struggling with here is the number of houses is eighty-six, okay? Um, but we had gone up in parking, we, we started a certain number of parking, re- refresh my memory, what was the original?
There was about one per home, then there was about two per home.
Okay.
Then that there was, now there's one and a half.
Now there's one and a half, right?
You had two hundred some on parking spots in this section.
So, yeah, I don't, you know, if some people don't have cars, you know, and some people have two cars. Is that what your thinking is on this or? And where did we come up with that math?
There was a concern at one point, if guests visit, where are they going to park if there's one per home? So then we added one additional per home and then that was too much pavement. So this just allows for flexibility where some homes have a car, some have one, maybe a couple have two, maybe there's visitors. So.
So there's no place in here that you could have a small parking lot? So that if you have visitors, they could park in a separate section and walk to a home?
We could take away the rec area, but we would rather keep that in the green space than add a parking lot.
No. So would anybody here like to see something in that rec area? Do you want picnic tables? Do you want a pavilion? Do you want nothing? Do you want a couple of barbecue places?
Three thousand square feet, is that what it is?
Yes.
Three thousand.
Um, you know, for me with the rec area and you're setting aside, but what you're trying to say is that you don't know exactly what it's going to be. It's not going to be a pickleball court, for example, or a swimming pool. Uh, so, you know, it might be what the residents decide, is that what you're saying? You're just setting it aside. If everybody says, I want picnic tables or grills, you're going to put grills there.
If you make us decide now, we'll work with your suggestions.
What I'm saying is that on your plan, there isn't a defined sport or, and that recrea, it's flexible.
Yes.
Thank you.
It would be nice to have maybe a small pavilion because some, some of these people over fifty-five don't like si- sitting in the sun. You know, some of them do, maybe have, uh, a decent sized pavilion, have maybe six, six picnic tables, four, six picnic tables underneath, four picnic tables. And, uh, maybe a grill, um, outside, outside, obviously outside, um, for fire hazard reasons. Because some people like sitting outside in the sun. If they want to get out of the sun, you got a little pavilion. I think that'd be perfect, what do you think?
You'll get there.
That's what I'm thinking, you know? What do you think?
See what the public thinks.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to, well, Andy, do you want to address a few issues?
And briefly, uh. Learning member, Scully's absolutely correct. The solution to the garbage is frequency of pickups. So if it has to become daily to keep it neat and slightly, then, then that's what has to be done. That will be part of our management plan. Um, I heard a number of things that it seemed like you were interested in that, that we were amenable to agreeing to as conditions of the approval. We are trying to work with you. Um, eighty-six is the best we can do, we can't, we can't move that number. But I think we've, we've worked with you on a lot of the other things. We will connect the sidewalks, we'll provide, uh, picnic tables and grills under a pavilion in the recreation area. Porches on at least the majority of them. Uh, the management plan, the operation and maintenance for all the utilities as well as the, the basic management of the property. We could provide that and in advance to COs. And I, I think we're in a position where you can, we can all take a victory lap. Say we designed this the best way we can and we got a great project ahead of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, we'll have another opportunity to comment. Let's ask, uh, is there any member of the public here to comment on this proposal? Yes, please come down.
Hello, everybody, Stephen Maples. Um, I'm going to do the same comment I've done twice before and point out that there are the crossings. Uh, there's no dedicated crossings, pedestrian crossings to get across these paths. Um, they're not connected, so there's a risk, especially with older drivers. And especially since the road was made larger, so now the speeds are going to start moving up. So, um, some crossings, uh, raised crossings would be ideal, but at least painted crossings, um, to be able to circulate, uh, throughout the, the, throughout the development. Um, and also, as far as I understand it, I believe that two eighty-five seventy is applicable in this scenario, which requires, um, it, when buildings are not built to the, to the front lot line, a sidewalk shall link the primary entrance to the municipal sidewalk. There's not a municipal sidewalk here, um, but that's a problem that this should be solving. We should be encouraging, um, the, that pedestrian safety. So as far as I understand the law, there, this isn't really a suggestion, this is an obligation. Um, so, you know, I think we should condition any kind of approval on seeing that. Thank you.
On seeing what?
On seeing the, the pedestrian circulation, the crossings, particularly the crossings to, to help with interior circulation and a connection out to the street. There, right, but there's just not a sidewalk that goes out to the street at all at this point, so, thank you.
Did you say two eighty-five seventy?
Yes, two eighty-five seventy.
Stephen, are you asking for a connection to the sidewalk across New Turnpike?
If, if, if they're, I would say if they're not willing to build a sidewalk along the frontage in anticipation that the city would take up that mantle to install a, a, a sidewalk on that side of the street. Right now, there is not a sidewalk on that side of the street, there is one across the street. So if they're not willing to do that, then yes, a, a connection across the street would be appropriate.
By, by delineating a crosswalk across the public road, right?
Yeah, cut, I talked about this with their engineer yesterday, I was waiting to see what you guys had to say about it, if you're in favor of it. But it does look like a reasonable thing that can be done if they connect the sidewalks out to the front and then run a, you know, mid-block crossing or something to get, because the, so there is existing sidewalk on the opposite side of the turnpike road. So kind of complete some connectivity out there.
So in order for them to get to Turnpike from this development, there's no sidewalk coming out where the cars go in, correct?
Not yet.
And that's what we want?
It's something that, if you desire, it could be conditioned and that would have to go through my office since it would be in our right of way.
I think, you, you, what you're talking about, and so connecting to the crosswalk that's going to go across New, New Turnpike.
I mean, there's nothing here for them to get out to this, there's nothing here for them to get out to there.
Yeah, I just wanted.
There's no sidewalk.
I just wanted to clarify for Chris that.
Any other member of the public want to speak on this application? Yes, come on down, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Arthur Wang. Uh, it's my first time being in one of these hearings, so please forgive any mistakes I may make.
Just speak close to the mic, please, or pull it to you.
Like this? All right, um, the two questions that I had, as I was sitting over there, was firstly, the question of, we, I heard in the discussion that the collection of trash was going to be essentially, uh, decided. And if there were any deficiencies in the trash frequency, that it would be stepped up. My question on that is, uh, is the decision to step up frequency of trash contingent essentially, essentially uh, on just the landlord deciding to and any pressure the tenants may decide to put on the landlord if that happens? Uh, the second question I did have was, uh, what the rec area was going to end up looking like? I, I don't believe I heard, um, a final decision on what was going to be in there and whether or not the developers were required to put anything in there other than just grass, I suppose. Uh, that's my two questions.
Well, I think the, um, applicant's representative said they would have a pavilion with number of picking cables and grills, so, in that area. What, what was your other question?
Uh, the other question was ultimately, who makes the call, uh, regarding the frequency of trash? And is it essentially contingent, uh, on the landlord's decision?
I would say, I mean, I don't know the answer to this, but I assume that the management would want it neat and, um, acceptable to the tenants or they wouldn't have tenants, so I'm sure they'll take care of it. But unless, I don't think the city will be involved unless it becomes a health hazard, in which case, healthy, the other city would be involved.
Yeah, I mean, if they're breaking, you know, building in codes laws, they'd be issued notices as violations. And it's part of the benefit if they develop an operation maintenance plan and something to also to, you know, point to if there's issues there to help enforce it in addition to the actual code violations.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this application? It's now we're closed public hearing and we'll open it up for, to further board discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I was just wondering, are all these sidewalks going to be wheelchair accessible?
Yes, we have, we have to comply with the ADA. So in terms of, there's no curb, there's, you know, ramp up.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, uh, what's your pleasure?
Peter?
Yes.
I, I just want to inform the board, I, I think I made a fairly comprehensive list of all the conditions that
Okay.
Were discussed there, I don't know.
Okay, do you want to, can you recite them?
I can, yeah. Do you, do you want to?
Please.
Do it before a motion is made, okay?
Excited of and then they can motion of all the preceding.
Okay.
Be after we hear the list, whether or not, uh, we're comfortable with a conditional approval or if we need to leave it open until.
Okay.
We see it documented.
So the ones I have, and I, I think it's comprehensive, um, is that the applicant, uh, is to provide a, um, uh, a two eighty-five eighty N letter, uh, detailing the, um, the bulk requirements and things like that that they're proposing that will govern this PDD now and in the future. Um, secondly, uh, the applicant will provide, uh, that'd be under separate cover. The sep, the applicant will provide a marketing letter that will, uh, show the board, you know, the essentially the occupancy and things like that and how, you know, the approximate market rates that they're going to be, uh, sold at. Second, uh, thirdly, uh, that the, uh, recreation area, which is currently, uh, not showing any development, thirty by one hundred in the northeast area of the site, will be equipped with, um, a small pavilion capable of, uh, covering four to six picnic tables, uh, with, uh, I don't know how many grills, some, some, one or more grills outside for the use of, of the tenants. So that people have shade as well as sun in that area. Okay. Next I have, um, uh, that the applicant can connect the sidewalks, which are on each side of the center aisle on the sides, so that someone can make a full circuit of the, um, of the center island, we'll call it. Uh, the applicant commits to providing an operation and maintenance, management plan, uh, prior to, uh, so that as a condition of getting their CO. And it should be a fairly comprehensive plan to govern, you know, regular maintenance of the hydrants and the sewers as well as all the snow removal and garbage collection and all that. I'm not sure if this was agreed or not, uh, whether or not to move a trash bin, one of the, I guess there are two sets of trash bins of two each. Uh, there was an offer to move one set to the south end of the. There was an offer to move one set to the south end of the, south side of the project. But I don't know where the board was on that exactly. I know it was kind of.
I think, weren't we talking about the number of pickups, adjusting the number of pickups?
Dallas.
Need for another dumpster, you know, if they have a pickup a day.
I think that maybe that can be covered in their management, in their operation and management plan. So.
I don't think the issue was, I think the issue was the location, the convenience of people on the south end getting to.
Right, I mean, you know, some people are going to have to move their garbage in the winter too, when there's ice and snow and things like that. So the management might consider spacing the trash bins appropriately for the use of the tenants. Management to provide, I guess there are 86, so at least 44 of the structures with porches, majority. Hopefully more than that, but the board, the board favors porches on these units. And last, in conform with the suggestion of Mr. Maples, to paint crosswalks within the complex so that people have marked crossings and that the crossings are do, are marketed well enough so that, you know, traffic will be well aware that people are to cross at those, at those locations. In addition, there's been a suggestion to connect the sidewalks that are in the, in the complex to the, at least to the road, to a crossing, to the Turnpike Road sidewalk. So that would involve construction of a sidewalk, which I do not think is on your plan at all in the entrance way. If that, I don't know if that's feasible or not, but.
And the one question I would have on that, Rick, is, does that include painting a hatched crosswalk across New Turnpike?
I think it would with, to the city spec and with the city's, you know, consent.
With the support of the traffic engineer.
Gotcha.
Which is also our city engineer.
So would there be a sidewalk on north and south that goes out to Turnpike?
I don't, I don't know, that might narrow the road too much. I don't know.
We don't, we don't show sidewalk reaching, we save the green space on the north side. So I would anticipate we extend on the south side to New Turnpike and then have the painted crossing on the south side.
Okay, can I make one more suggestion? As you're going in, on the south side, you have 3A buildings. Then you have 4C buildings and then the rest, that whole line, north and south are B. Can we connect that sidewalk too for the B and the C? No?
While you're up, could I just ask a question too? On these porches, are these contemplated to be porches that actually could be occupied? Or are they just overhang over the front door? I think on your elevation, at least one of them looked like it was just maybe a, basically a canopy over the front door.
You would be able to sit on them, yes.
That doesn't take away from the square footage of the house.
No. Okay, yeah, so we added them to ensure they fit. And then as far as the, the crosswalk we're talking about across the road, there's actually one just south of our driveway today. I haven't seen it recently. It might have gotten really faded, so the, the location is there. So that seems to be the place that makes sense.
So is that from when the hospital entrance was there?
Probably.
I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's everything I have.
That's helpful, yes. So does anybody object to anything that's on the, on the list? Does anybody need something else on the list?
You guys, you're in agreement with the list?
Yes, we'll, we'll agree to the list, but if it's a condition of approval, I think that protects the city a little more. Yeah.
So question, is the, is the city planning department engineer comfortable with approval in that condition, which means it's going to be on you folks to basically approve it and enforce it?
I'm the executive secretary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly comfortable with, with many of those elements, you know, especially this sidewalk connectivity and crosswalks are redesigned by PE and then reviewed by our engineering team. And so right up our alley, I guess my question would be, are you comfortable with the, you know, pavilion and I assume temporary structures? I mean, you want the pavilion to be a permanent structure, is that the assumption here? But the other amenities could be temporary or you want them to be permanent? Just for clarification here.
Meaning the picnic tables?
Yeah, like picnic tables and.
Oh, that could be part of the management plan, wasn't it?
Yeah, as I'm saying, so, I mean, those are temporary facilities. So it would seem to me like, you know, just talking out loud here, right? The pavilion's kind of the.
So Chris, would we have to specify that if they put a pavilion in, we want a concrete slab there?
I think you should. I think if you have an idea for what you want, if you want that right now, let's add it.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of foolish to, you'd have to have perfectly level ground to put picnic tables there. So concrete slab underneath the.
I mean, there's pavilions with gravel, you know, it's two, both.
We, I mean, I was anticipating a permanent structure, not a wedding tent. You know, we think of a permanent structure made of wood, that at least four tables could go underneath and have some tables outside with the grills outside.
Post and, post and beam, concrete floor, no propane, charcoal grills permanently affixed into the ground. That good?
Yeah, I feel, I feel comfortable.
We don't want, we don't want any of the picnic tables made out of pressure-treated lumber as well, regular KD lumber. Please, you can preserve it, but don't use pressure-treated, right?
Okay. Are you good?
I think so.
Okay, you're good?
I'm good.
Got to work on you and I'm.
The projects never end on our side. This is.
Well, you're going to be, the building department's going to be inspecting along the way anyway. So as long as there's a document that they can follow.
Yeah.
Right?
All right.
Okay, is there a motion?
I think, so we're at this point where, or did we declare the application complete yet? This is final. So I'd like to make a motion to make file approval conditioned upon the list of items that the rich and the developer as, the applicant has agreed upon.
I second.
Further discussion? Mr. Scotty?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Dickinson?
Aye.
Mr.?
Aye.
Mr. Kio, aye. Motion carries your names.
Thank you all. Thanks for having us here. Appreciate it.
Please review the meeting minutes carefully when Eric sends those out.
We'll see if anybody showed up. Is there anyone here representing King's Landing? Come down, please. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Colton Hill with BDC Group.
You can take it right out of there for help, yeah.
An MC, okay. My name is Colton Hill, representing the BDC Group. We're here today to discuss King's Landing 2. Back in the spring, we're in front of this board to discuss some minor site plan amendments resulting from some field conditions, one being a national grid transformer placement, another being the emergency demo of 2129. Additionally, finalizing the architectural features of the building previously approved. It was at that meeting that Mr. Russ Reeves and the board decided that collectively we meet with the Fifth Ave community and come up with a resolution for the infill of that location along with the remaining architectural issues. Subsequent meetings were held. I think we've come to a mutual agreement on what we're going to do in place, along with the architectural features on the building. And with us is Drea from the Fifth Ave community, Barb Nelson. We've all been meeting quite a bit to discuss this. And collectively, we've come up with a solution, which you have in your packets in front of you with the color amendments. And I'm going to actually have Barb elaborate a little bit more on the infill scenario. I'll give it the high level. This building, this project goes back a long time before this board. We had to build around some existing buildings, so it's created a unique geometry. We've kind of come up with an idea, which is going to be a park setting in this area, which will have some ornamental artwork, architectural features, along with some seating and amenity space. Barb has it here and I can pass it around or discuss.
No, they, they weren't provided for timely, so if you want to hit them out, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Barb Nelson, Director at TAP. So we met with the, with Dreya, community leadership and community members, and looked at the loss of that little historic building, which we had all fought so long and hard to keep and very unfortunately lost. The concept you have in front of you is a concept where, you know, the furniture has to be picked and whatnot. But what's important is that people can come and go from this little courtyard and they can get into the building or into the, into the parking. Because what was important about that little building there is that it actually had an entrance, a stoop on the street. So we wanted to maintain that sense of activity. We've got some artistic screening and landscape to help camouflage the transformer. And also because, you know, this is a small, you know, it's a small trade, losing that whole building and the cost of renovating it. We suggested and BDC accepted the responsibility to patch sidewalks along the entire block and repair, replace, prune the street trees and add some more in. So we, the, the community was, was pleased with that. Dreya is here to just acknowledge that her community has been involved and is on board with this process.
Hi, my name is Dreya Lanza. I live at 2227 Fifth Avenue, right down the road from this project. And yes, we have come up with this idea of how to make King's Landing to work with the community in view of losing two of the four ground stones that we were supposed to have there. And there are a few details that need to be worked out with some of the owners of the properties along Fifth Avenue in terms of how to place the trees and exactly what needs happening with the sidewalks. Those are details. We've already talked to some of the owners and they're aware of the idea and are in support of it. And also are in support of the color choices that we were asked to make for the facade of King's Landing 2. And if you have anything else that you'd like to know about input from the community, I'd be happy to address that.
So at the last meeting, again, this being a site plan amendment, the original site plan, this was the final condition that kind of came out about it. And, you know, I believe we've collectively worked together at a lot of discussions. And if there's any questions about what we've discussed and, you know, the solutions we're presenting, any questions for you?
So is, was there a written document you guys agreed upon or something like that?
We have a letter on BDC's letterhead committee to work this out.
This is fantastic.
Yeah. There's going to be some moving parts as we go along.
But it sounds like, just from what I'm feeling, without a document, you guys are on the same page now. Everybody's, they're all good.
Yep.
That makes me feel really good.
It's in there.
Yeah.
Yes, and you have a couple of homes that are staying there that are the originals that are there. So you're leaving the facades then exactly the way they are and agreed to the colors and whatnot that have to be done with those and.
Correct. We had to rebuild one of the, I call it the angled bays. And we agreed to leave it for the rendering that was shown, the colors that were on the original rendering is what we'll paint it to.
Okay.
For the two existing buildings, correct.
The ones that would be complementary to the rest of the neighborhood, that they would cover the other ground stones.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if the public has comments. Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? Yeah, anyone? So, if not, we'll, we'll close the public comment period and we'll open it up for further board discussion. Any, any questions, discussion?
I think it's awesome. Last time they were here, they kind of broke that. They felt like they finally got somewhere and it's nice to see they guys work together. Work together and everybody's, I feel a lot of love here.
It's unusual.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to make this.
So Corporation Council and I were just discussing the proposed sidewalk that's across the street. That drive entrance is actually, technically, it's like a street.
I think it's Crooked Alley.
Crooked Alley. So, you know, according to the zoning code, if you're going to install sidewalks across a drive entrance, they would have to go completely across. But the question now then becomes, is it a drive entrance or is it actually considered a street? Because if it's considered a street, you might not.
I believe it's a private drive, though, correct? Isn't it to the parking lot, to the nine unit across the street? It wouldn't be a public road, right?
I've, there is a public way there. It's called Crooked Alley. And I'm not sure, forgive me, I'm not totally sure of the path, but I'm pretty sure that I think we had to give you an easement, actually, for the Fifth Avenue side there, for that entrance. I can't remember what it was for exactly, though.
No. We had distinguished an easement for a water line that ran through King's One. We rerouted the water line, so we gave an easement to the city coming down Federal Street. So the only remaining city property is Laundry Place, which is between King's Landing One and King's Landing Two. And that's where the municipal sewer line actually runs underneath. So Crooked Alley was the original, that was the original one that ran past Beer Garden and up over that way. But we ended up buying that corner lot through the LDC. We actually purchased that land through the City of Troy.
The corner lot was on, was on Federal Street side, right?
Federal and Fifth, correct.
Right.
So I guess what.
I mean, I could be wrong, but I think that, I think that that entrance way there is a public way that went all the way, that connected with maybe Laundry Place or something like that. I may be naming it wrong and I'm not totally sure, okay.
You know, as we, you know, like Barb said, there are a few little details to figure out. Trying to work with, you know, some of the neighbors with, you know, replanting or pruning. Would it be amenable to have a, you know, condition here that upon engineer's review, a final plan be submitted before we actually do the improvements or something to that effect?
Here's the, the short of it is, is I don't know that it's necessarily required for you to do that. It's just that if you're going to install, if we're going to consider this a drive entrance, then by the zoning code, you're required to connect a sidewalk across the whole length of it. So like for the, for both entryways. So like for the, for both entryways, if you're proposing new sidewalks, they had to go across the entire.
Okay.
The sidewalk would have to go down to road level, right?
Correct.
It would
Yeah, you would have to make it ADA.
It'd have to ramp and have a curb cut essentially.
There's actually a granite curb there. It's just been paved over.
Oh.
So it might have been a sidewalk at some point in time, but the curb is still there.
So is this a code issue more than a
It is, it is in the zoning code, yes. If they didn't want to put, if they're proposing to install sidewalks, like essentially if you're going to
Do it, we got to do it the right way.
So we can approve it and then they just got to comply with the code.
I would probably, I would probably ensure that if you're going to approve it, I would probably make sure that that's part of your approvals condition.
So make a condition that, you know, that the the entrance way, the final design of the entrance way conformed to the city engineers' requirements or something.
We can do that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So we have pending motion, right? Do you want to add that?
Now, it seems like we have to start over again.
All right. Redraw your motion.
So propose a motion to call for completeness and final approval of this conditioned upon the code approved crosswalks and sidewalks going through the entrance of Crooked Laundry Place, I guess.
Not Laundry Place?
So this would be Crooked Alley. Laundry Place here.
All sidewalks will comply with the code satisfaction of the city engineer.
I think it's Crooked Alley.
Crooked Alley.
Or we don't even have to name it. I mean, it's the, it's the Fifth Avenue entrance way.
They have to, they have to, you know, adhere to the code for crossing a street or a alley.
Right.
With their sidewalks.
And designed in accordance with the city engineer's specs.
Okay. Second?
A second.
Discussion. Mr. Scully?
Aye.
Mr. Dickson?
Aye.
Mr. Schufeld?
Aye.
Peter Kio?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. So. Is anyone here representing the 310 Spring Avenue project? We'll defer to the end of the meeting, but
I think I'm from Albany.
What's wrong? It's a public way.
I know.
Eighty-fourth Street. Come on down.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Brendan Tadio. I'm here on behalf of Me Studio, representing the owner, my Ullman. I have a description that Me Studio has left me with kind of an overview of the project. Do you want me to read through it or how should I proceed?
The pleasure. We've already heard this before, right?
Yeah.
Anybody need further explanation? Any questions for the advocate?
Wasn't there a concern the last time they were here about a fire, the firewall? Is this, this one? No, this is, no, that's, that's eighteen nineteen, eighteen eighteen. Okay, nevermind.
The only thing they had was the stair tread in the right away or something.
Yeah.
And that was approved by historic fire marshal and the city engineer.
Okay. And we've determined where your garbage is going to be and within the
I know that was discussed in a previous meeting.
It's going to be
I'm not sure where it is on the plan. Is any
I believe, though, that the garbage is to be stored in corrals that are inside the courtyard. They'll be wheeled through the carriage house to the alley for pickup. Just a moment, let me pull it up.
Other questions for the advocate?
Do we have a picture of how the back of this is going to look when it's done? Someplace here?
I know there's a rear elevation and there's a couple of 3D views through the courtyard. I don't
I'm talking about the wall on the alley.
Of the historic building, the carriage house? There is a rear elevation of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Towards the end.
You'll note that there's, between the carriage house and the main structure, that there's a provision for garbage.
Prayer.
Any other questions?
Assuming you've gotten your flow counts from DPU.
Yes, that was received, signed off by DPU.
The others?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if the public has any comment. Is there any member of the public here to comment on this application? No one? Okay, thank you. Any further board discussion? Your motion?
So this will be the final and they would come back for hearing next or is this final, final? This is final. So I make a motion that we approve this site, site plan is final and I make a motion that we approve the site plan for final and let them continue with what they got to do.
Second?
All done?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Scully?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Mr. Schufeld?
Aye.
Mr. Kio?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous.
Are we taking a recess?
Can we, can we act?
New business.
Spring Avenue without the advocate being here?
No.
No?
Before us.
We don't do that.
Can you, can you say that on the record?
They're going to have an issue because the school opens in a couple of weeks.
I mean, I can go check my email and see if they reached out.
Because they got their CBA approval, right?
They did get, they did get their variances. I don't know.
Called three times today.
You made three calls.
I mean, like Peter Metch asked for them to step up three times.
Oh, no. Peter, we just don't do that.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe they don't allow it.
Why don't I go check?
I'm afraid they might not understand.
Right.
It's possible they don't understand. I thought the CBA was the celebration when they got the you might have thought they were all done.
We will I was asking her.
Do we react on Zoom?
React on Zoom. Call in at a time of I know, I was just saying, they're often
He's trying to sweep me up.
We're taking a two-minute recess here.
I mean, it's like
All right. So we will take a two-minute recess, three-minute recess.
I know.
You voted for it.
I'm blaming on you.
You voted for it. It's over.
Suck it up. Oh geez, we have to do ten, 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 eleven, and we still have to do Uncle Sam. I see Bloody was over at the, near the, Nick Park. They didn't do that. Am I being a thorn in your side? Am I being a thorn in your side?
I think that was good. Took a little too long, put it a little faster.
They didn't want to agree with what I want.
I felt like, I felt like gas.
Well, I couldn't tell them that I wanted less buildings there until they got their PDD. But then when I found out that the PDD is like, no, that's a recent modern building. We can have to make this feasible. It's like, well, it's too many.
It was over a hundred. They listened to your, they listened to all your concessions.
No, they gave me twice as many parking spots for my Christmas party, remember? Then they had to cut that down.
They were under blocks since early winter, early spring, late winter.
They're not changing any exterior.
Well, I hope it's, I'd rather be warned.
They might think they're done.
I hope, I hope they, I'd rather be warned about the way I'm thinking about this project than be right and then be
I think sometimes you have to look at, say, where to get the last. Don't allow eight, seven, for example. But, you know, the idea that
First meeting. They had some tiny house thing. They may not be for us. You know. TSL where someone show up.
They're going to get eight, seven.
Yeah. What level? They call somebody and they show up.
I wouldn't be surprised.
I mean, a lot of boards.
There's something to sell.
And there's also going to be fifty-five plus right next to Flannick. Then you got that piece of shit that's twenty-seven fifteen. And they got their approval for five stories because they told them that it's not feasible for them to build if they do not go up five stories. So they got that approval.
I don't want to go down that road.
One, your favorite?
Not Olympus. So they got their approval for five stories. And they said they couldn't build it unless they got five stories because they're anticipating that the brownstone cleanup is going to be where between one point two or three to one point five.
Yeah.
Do they have to factor us?
Hey, Peter. Want to call back?
Seeker.
I don't think we
No, I don't think we ever denied any.
Use the gavel.
I'm not sure if your lights are on, just so you're aware, like we are applying. Tell us now. The good news is that I asked Peter to go on a recess.
They will go, will come back in session. Come back in session, please.
Hang your gavel. So who are we doing now? Ten, 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 eleven?
You got, still got to put your calls right.
Do you want to do the, the lady present first? Do we want to
Take the new business first?
Yeah, ten, eleven, second.
Yeah, because that's just a presentation, right?
Well, who's left?
Ten, eleven.
Oh, I forgot that. Let's, let's do the garage first then.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna handle fifteen, twenty, fifteen to twenty-five Fourth Street. Is anyone here on that project? Come on down, please. Identify yourselves for the record.
There we go. The rest of my crew is slowly filtered in. They thought we were going to be the, the next application on this one, but I will get started on their behalf. Um, so, uh, for the record, Joe Danable with the Environmental Design Partnership here on behalf of RJ Valenik Companies. In their application for the redevelopment of the Uncle Sam's parking garage. Uh, we're here tonight for an initial, uh, sketch plan review with the planning board. We have had a public forum meeting, uh, a few months ago in which the project was introduced to the city and the residents of the city. Uh, as well as several council members and then various, uh, uh, members of the various boards and committees of the city. Um, we had a, a pretty good response at that point in time. Uh, we've continued to develop plans and evolve them to what we're going to show today. Uh, we're simply looking to introduce our concept to the board, uh, obtain some questions, uh, some comments, any concerns from the planning board as well as, uh, staff comments, get them out onto the record. Uh, so that we can continue to advance our plans and be, uh, the next level, which would be a full set of detailed plans and preliminary review and approval of the application. So I think everyone is familiar with the location. Uh, this is the location, the former Uncle Sam's parking garage that was torn down, uh, probably about three years ago now. Uh, now sits there as a vacant lot. Uh, we are looking to redevelop that with a hundred and ninety-five unit, uh, multi-story, uh, apartment complex that will, uh, essentially take up the majority of the parking garage land as well as some additional lands that were acquired from the CDTA. Uh, giving us, uh, basically a square lot, rectangular lot at that location. Uh, so what we are looking at is a first floor parking garage with small lobby areas that connect up to a, uh, second, third, fourth, fifth story on the second story of, of parking garage, and that's generally what you're looking at on this layout. Uh, you can see the, uh, E-shaped outline of the building in gray, and then you have the green area, uh, the U-shaped going inside the E, that is an outdoor recreational space. Uh, that will have, uh, walkways, patios, sports courts, uh, various recreation, any space for the residents of the building itself. Uh, as I said, we are looking at a hundred and ninety-five units and we're proposing two hundred and thirty-seven, uh, parking spaces in the garage. And when we go through our numbers and our unit breakdowns of the number of bedrooms, uh, there are two hundred and thirty-seven bedrooms in the apartment complex, and we're providing two hundred and thirty-seven spaces within the parking garage on the first floor. Uh, not to mention there's ancillary parking and various parallel parking, uh, locations throughout this area of the city. First floor parking garage plan, this has been provided, uh, the bottom of the page faces streets right here, Fourth Avenue.
Let's change.
Fourth Street. Fourth Street, uh, on the left is Fulton and on the top is Third. We have an entrance into the parking garage on Third Street as well as an entrance on Fourth. To the north, which would be the right, uh, we also are introducing green space in that area, and that will be used as a, uh, outdoor dog park for the residents of this community. Uh, we have various elevation views of the project from different, uh, locations. This one's taken, uh, over from a Starbucks island, maybe near, uh, the kind of the Sea Smoke Restaurant, or you can see the outline. My laser. Here. There you go. This is the new building here in the center of the screen. Uh, here's another artistic rendering of looking looking south on Fourth. This is the building location, the building elevations, get first story, parking garage, four stories of residential units above that. This is looking at an aerial view from the west or Third Street. Uh, this is the second story, which has the outdoor amenity and recreational space, a, a concept of what that may look like. Uh, but again, it is our intent to have various aspects we're showing here, plants, grass, uh, sports courts, outdoor grills, outdoor kitchens, you know. Very nice amenities for this area of the town and really for any residential, uh, apartment community that I've seen. Building elevations, this is the main facade of the building on Fourth. This is looking from the northwest on the top image and from the southwest on the bottom image. Uh, bottom image, we're looking at the intersection of Third and Fulton, looking up at the building, and on the top view, we're looking say this would be closer to like dinosaur barbecue area, side of dinosaur barbecue over at the site there. Uh, some artistic renderings of the courtyard and some of the private amenity spaces located on different floors of the facility. So that is a very brief introduction of the project. Uh, again, as I said, we're looking, the, the main principle, we're looking at a hundred and ninety-five unit building with two hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces. A, uh, four-story building over top of the parking garage, uh, essentially taking the entire block and redeveloping the entire block from the curves, uh, inward. And again, we're here for sketch plan reviews, we're looking for any comments, uh, this board may have as well as staff at this point in time. I will point out that we did have a workshop meeting, uh, with various.
Well.
Excuse me. We had a meeting with various agencies at the town, a workshop meeting, I think, uh, I know Eric and Chris were there. And it must have been twenty people in the room, uh, from, from different, uh, building department, planning department, all, all different agencies. We went over, we created a, a large list of items, uh, and then we submitted for this concept review, just to, uh, get it in front of the board, introduce it to the board, uh, reintroduce it to any of the public and see what, if any, comments we have at this point in time, so we can continue to move it forward. Thank you.
I have a question. Have you been in front of HRC at all?
We have not.
Okay. Can we go back to your streetscape on Fulton or Fourth, one of those two? That's Fourth. It's Third, Ariel. Okay, that's something like that.
This is Fourth.
So I guess, you know, when you go for a HRC, I don't know if they would be commenting this way, but sometimes the elevation of the top of the buildings, you know, activating them in a different height on each one gives it the idea that there's more than one big building. These kind of look a little bit like college suites up on Sixth Avenue, um, where they, they're, you know, it's almost like identifiable for each building. So you have corbels, height differences, and maybe a foot, two feet, three feet, whatever. But, you know, to the, to me, this looks like that might be something they would suggest. The.
We should.
The bay window, is that, is that a bay window?
Yeah, that, I don't know if bay is the right.
So some things are sent back and some things come out, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Steve McKenzie, the building architect.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, my name is Steve McKenzie, so happy to clarify any questions you may have. As far as the, uh, character of the building, we followed the zoning guidelines in terms of scale and massing. And we modified, uh, the current version from the previous version we had a couple of months ago in response to some of the comments. So your comments affect around the money, what we've actually done is step back some of the upper floors. It's a little hard to see in elevation, but you can see how we broke the, uh, plane of the front facade.
Right.
So the top four units in between the larger volumes that are closer to the street actually step back and have a private roof terrace. I don't know if you can see that.
Yeah.
With the plantines on the edge on the top floor. And then, uh, the floor below that where you have balconies, the balconies kind of do the same thing. Where it breaks up the scale of the building and the massing. So one of the challenges, uh, we always have in this kind of setting as architects is balancing what I call designing from the inside out with outside in. And it's really about balancing constraints, so zoning is obviously one of those. To get to set the right height. And obviously the client's agenda, budget, building codes, et cetera, certainly part of that too. So part of this is reconciling the fact that it's a housing development, which I think would be a tremendous asset for the town, by the way, probably the most valuable contribution you could make for this type of site in terms of use and location. So some of what we have to do is balance the, uh, character from the inside out, so to speak, in terms of the use and the fact that it's housing. With what you're saying about suitability for the context, so we're very sensitive to what's suitable for the context, which is why we've articulated the volumes and broken them up further with the balconies, buried them in terms of the materials, which are traditional timeless materials, which likewise is sympathetic. So the overall effect, I think, and hope you'll agree, is that it's a good balance in terms of, let's say, being, uh, uh, what's the right word, uh, having a certain level of integrity, if you will, in terms of what the building's about, balancing that with the context. So we feel it is sympathetic in terms of the scale, the materials, the colors. The finistration, uh, picks up on the zoning requests for vertical proportions on windows. The windows have typically a two over two proportion on the glazing, which is a, a very classic, uh, Italian kind of approach. And there's other things I can digress on, but I'm kind of digressing on your question.
The challenge that you have, uh, with regards to exterior design on this building, so, you know, you're, you're on Fulton Street, you're right in front of one of the most elegant buildings that's ever been built.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, there's no way, I mean, to, to take ideas from that building and put it to you is very, very difficult.
Right.
But then on Fourth Street, you have a, a different type of building that, that's on the other side.
Right.
That does have different elevations and they're the kind of old storefronts where merchants might have lived above.
Right.
So it, you know, it's a little bit, you know, it, it's a challenge for you.
Yeah, and that's, that's why we varied the edge at the front.
Yeah.
And stepped back to top four. The height does vary between the volumes, uh, within certain limits. I think the, uh, larger section is where we have the heavier, uh, in temperature at the tops of the buildings, which are typically the brick buildings, those are taller. May be difficult to perceive, depending on where you stand, yeah.
Elevation.
But that is a couple of feet higher than some of the other sections clad in the HD panel. The zoning regs are pretty restrictive as far as materials, there's not too many options they allow, which is fine, they're good choices as far as we're concerned.
It'll be interesting to see what the HRC says because, you know, you, this is definitely a prominent thing.
Yeah.
And, you know, when you come down river with the Uncle Sam garage gone, it really shows an entrance way to downtown with the freer building sitting there, so prominent.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's a challenge.
Yep. I think, uh, one of the comments from that, uh, neighborhood meeting had to do with the, uh, the landscape and the greenscape. We did add it quite a bit. On the Third Street side, we added some vertical trellis treatment on that edge of the building. We addressed, I think, the comment somebody had about a graffiti wall magnet or something, if I remember right, where we had a blank wall. So we've changed the character on that, which, uh, Joe had up, I don't know if you picked up on that, but we're showing pergolas on that edge of the resident courtyard for shade structures. Uh, I'm, I'm, uh, one of those people that needs to shave when I'm outside, so simplest way to address that is wear a hat, of course, but hats are not always available.
It's definitely direct sun.
Yes.
Into that, that's very.
Yeah, that's a tough west exposure too, so.
Right.
But part of that also is, uh, the other thing we think is really important from, uh, a resident standpoint is the, the virtues of light and fresh air. So we made a point of having a lot of glass, taking advantage of the view opportunities. Whatever you may think of the views, look at across Chamberlain Park and the river, water's tremendous for creating a sense of place. So simply having views of water is really magical in terms of creating that, uh, asset. So every unit, uh, to the extent we could, is going to have views of the river, probably seventy percent of the total. And there's some ways we've done that with how the units are designed, the inside, it's what's called the skip stop. Where you, uh, on an upper story have that view opportunity. Every unit has a balcony, you probably noticed that looking at it. That works to our advantage in terms of how we finesse the scale of it. And I'll come back to that in a bit in a second, if you'll let me digress a bit more. But the balconies are all sized about eight by thirteen and a half feet. They're all sized large enough so somebody can dine out on a balcony. I, I, I'm a big fan of, uh, all fresco dining, if you, I think food tastes better outdoors, does depend on the food, of course, but they're intentionally sized, so people will benefit from that, take advantage of that. And, uh, the other thing that comes back to what I was saying about balancing design from the inside out with outside in is I think the building actually reflects that. The three sides, really the four sides that are on the perimeter facing the other buildings downtown do take on more of a traditional kind of articulation in terms of scale. It's sympathetic, but we're not trying to recreate or duplicate something that's historically adequate because that would be inappropriate. I, I think every preservationist I've ever worked with on a project has always said, the last thing you should do is try and replicate the historic character, you should try and take a backseat to it in terms of, let's say, the presence or the impact, but you should allow the historic building to take front stage.
It's no problem to pay homage to them.
Yeah, that's right. And, and be sympathetic, and that's really what I'm trying to say. So we've made a point of being sympathetic in terms of scale, uh, finistration, proportion, materials, color, et cetera. And, uh, so anyway, that's just a few quick comments, so happy to answer more questions or questions for Joe.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
The architect, are those, um, the brick pillars?
Uh huh.
Um, or the brick color pillars, are, are those connected on the backside to the building, or are they freestanding?
They're, they're structurally, uh, functional, if that's what you mean. They support the outer edge of the building, which is the most practical and cost-effective way to do that. We did that, uh, just so everybody's aware, but we followed the zoning guidelines in terms of encroachment. Frankly, I was surprised to see that, and I commend you, by the way, on the zoning regs, they're very thorough and clear and, and complete, I think. But that said, there are some good things, uh, that we found in that, that was one of them that allowed the encroachment into the right of way up to twelve feet. We didn't take advantage of the full twelve feet, we really encroached enough to have the balconies. And also have the projections on every unit so that we can wrap it on three sides of glass, that's a way to get light further into the interior on an apartment. So, and also the, the zoning regs do say that colonnades are acceptable as part of the encroachment. So I, I thought that was great, uh, for any of you that have been to Bologna, Italy, are familiar with Bologna. I brought a picture if you want to see one. Probably everybody, e- every building in the city, certainly the city center has colonnades, arcades everywhere, it's fantastic. And besides providing shade and hot weather, it provides weather protection. And it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a UNESCO feature of the city, uh, revered obviously by the Italians, and it's, it's such a pleasure to walk around in that kind of environment. What I liked about that in terms of your zoning is it's, it's a, a nod to the pedestrian, if you will. And doing something that accommodates the pedestrian in a good way, not always simply accommodating the car. And we understand that there's some current concerns about the columns adjacent to the, uh, I'll call it the curb. And I did double-check the, uh, dimensions, Eric, for your benefit. And I did double check the dimensions, Eric, for your benefit. For the most part, we exceed the dimension, let's say, from the curb to the face of the column for what a car door would be. A car door typically is thirty to forty inches, depending on size. And along Fourth Street, the tightest spot we have is right at the entry where it's three feet from face of column to face of curb. But that's an area where I wouldn't hopefully see people parking because that's kind of a drop off point as I would see it. So the majority of the columns are four foot ten, something like that on Fourth Street. So if that's a concern, it's not an issue as far as cars and people being able to walk by. I also noticed in your parking and sidewalk regs, I happened to reference that, just double checking some of the zoning requirements and the parking sidewalk regs do require a minimum of three foot clear at all times for a sidewalk. So we have that not only on the outside, but inside between the column and the building is typically about five foot nine, five foot ten clear between the column and the building. So it's very comfortable in terms of accommodating the pedestrian. I'd love it if, like you see in Bologna, and you should visit, like I said, if you haven't, food's great. But I think it's also an opportunity for other kinds of public activities like flea markets or book fairs, whatever. Again, you see that in some of the cities that have the arcades like that. So we think it's an opportunity and a nice amenity. There are a few spots where we are closer in terms of the column. The other is at the entry along Fulton Street. I don't know if you can pull that up. This is on Fourth, Fourth, yeah. Yeah, the over right hand one is the entrance Fulton. So there we are within a foot of the face of the column and the curb. For some reason, the depth of the sidewalk on Fulton Street is much shallower. I'm not sure why that's the case, but the city is certainly entitled to do that because it's your right of way. So I think we'd have to have a conversation about how you view a drop off at the entry for people taking Uber or taxis, whatever. But I would hope that wouldn't be used for a parking spot because that's really the only spot where it's tight. We can always pull back the facade a bit if that's, that's a concern, but otherwise I think it's actually pretty comfortable in terms of that. The, let's say, the clearance issue for car doors, et cetera, for what that's worth. Other questions on the columns or materials, et cetera?
Yeah, if you were just kind of making a pros and cons of the columns in the sidewalk, so what, what are the pros and cons there?
Well, the pros, the pros are, it actually allows us to better leverage, let's say, the site potential. Any site we ever look at, we always want to think about what's the highest and best use for a site. You know, it's hard for me to think of housing. Any other use being better than housing on the site for really pretty obvious reasons. I, I like to talk a lot about sustainable lifestyle. I don't think people talk enough about living in a walkable circumstance. And to me, that's one of the best things about what this project will do for the people who live here. It's going to take some time, I think, for that to take root and to really blossom in terms of what it does for the downtown. But if you think about two hundred thirty seven bedrooms and potentially that many residents, you know, that's going to be a significant benefit to the downtown. And the other thing I, I want to touch on too is I recognize that in a perfect world, everybody would prefer to have commercial on the ground floor, but we all know there's quite a bit of empty space that people have to do with downtown. So economically and for other reasons, it just wasn't realistic for the project. And some of that was too, was balancing the need to accommodate the parking that the residents are rightly going to need. My wife and I live in downtown Burlington, Vermont, right on Battery Street, if you know where that is, right by the waterfront. And I live above my office, so I have a short commute, which is great. But one of the things I think residents will love about this location is looking out the window at the streetscape and the activities, like watching a different sort of reality TV show. You know, whether you're watching somebody travel parks or you watch the people walking by or the dogs. Our dog loves to sit in the window. It's hard to pull him away sometimes because for him, that's, that's like the perfect circumstance. So that's another virtue of, we think, how this is going to benefit the resident as well as the, the downtown in terms of what that can be. But the big part is really the sustainable lifestyle. Living in a circumstance where you can walk to whatever your particular daily shopping need is. And I think likewise, that might take some time to, to flush out. We did the project with Betty and Craig at five forty seven River Street, which I know they've just opened up for housing units. Some of those are loft units, a nice mix of sizes. There's a grocery store across the street, which is great. I think that's walkable and not aware of another that's probably within walking distance, but I could be wrong, but same for drug stores. But again, I think some of that will start to develop in a response to this kind of a project. So I, I think there's so many good things that'll come out of something like this. So again, those are some of the, the benefits. Since you asked a question that I was seeing for the project, I was taking advantage of the question, talking about more than columns, of course. But I do think it's going to create an attractive, better environment for the pedestrian from that standpoint.
Microphone, please.
Specific benefit is.
You can take it out of that.
For the pedestrians themselves, having a covered area during inclement weather, which does occur here in upstate New York quite a bit. You know, for certain times when there's the farmer's market, there's an area as people are walking down the street, this gives them an opportunity to get out of the elements from at least the rain coming down on them during events like that. So that's a a significant benefit. This type of approach.
Will there be lighting in these corridors?
Yeah, I would probably see.
If you could speak.
The zoning does require a minimum of sixty feet height for the soffit in the walkway. So that's actually a good thing in terms of lighting because it allows you with one fixture to get pretty good spread on the light. Doesn't take much for exterior lighting. That takes very little to be effective. And I, I could envision perhaps some wall mounted sconces down near the sidewalk level. We haven't really looked at that yet, but I do think lighting is a key, a key factor, a key asset in how buildings present themselves. So I think a nice wall wash on the brick at the, say, just above the first floor would really be a nice effect too, especially at night. So it's also a security, safety perception that people have. So I'm not sure what the streetlight coverage is on on Fourth and Fulton the Third, but having the soffit light would certainly be a plus from that standpoint and perception.
I'll just say that some of the staff concerns about the columns were about access to underlaying infrastructure under sidewalks as well as concerns about vehicular.
Soap bowing?
Yeah. And then what was the other one? I think those were, those were two big ones. So if you're going to, if you're going to go forward with that, I'd probably just want to make sure that you're sitting down with the right city official that knows about some of the, the lines, electric, plumbing and things like that that are that are underneath the sidewalks that might require easements if that were to move forward.
And we share that. We're waiting to get the information. Until we know what's actually there, it's hard to hard to say what, what would be appropriate. So we're aware of it though.
That's a.
Comprehensive look at the underground utilities. We've had them all marked out, had drone flights. There are a lot of them and we're working through that mapping process right now to be able to understand them as we move forward.
So Rick, with that, they're going to need an easement then, right? If they're going to for, for the column itself. So it's going to be encroaching onto the right of way. So you, usually there's an encroachment permit that's required for that sort of thing. I don't know. I mean.
I think to this level, probably. It's probably easement.
Maybe, maybe it is, but I, I don't know exactly. We'll have to look at that.
And probably bonding during the construction period.
Oh, yeah. The, are you going to run heating tubes in the sidewalk?
That'd be nice.
Especially since you've got the columns there.
I had the same question. I'm like, well, it's covered, right? So the snow is not hitting it.
No, it's, it's.
I know, I know.
It's expensive, very expensive. And, you know, I think as long as the owner can deal with maintaining the snow, I don't know how much you got last winter, but it's not part of the, the plan at this point. It's, it's expensive.
Steve, I'll just say, I've been over here looking at your website and, you know, I found the Pavilion Grand Hotel. Is, is that similar in style to this?
Yeah, I don't know. It's, you know, I mean, it's similar in the sense that it's a housing type accommodation of commercial on the ground floor. You know, so yeah, I guess you could say.
Materials similar? I mean, because I, I honestly think the, the photos are nicer than the renders.
Yeah, yeah, that's usually the case. Yeah, it's, it's a similar project. That's true in, in some respects. Yeah. But we do plan on using, like I said, traditional materials, full thickness brick. Again, we follow the zoning guidelines for what we could use. So the board and bed is a very traditional material as well. And we did add some detail in terms of the corners on all parts of the building and window trim headers. Again, the two over two is a classic Italian type format for handling the fenestration. So other questions?
I have a question. Is your parking going to be ground level?
Yeah, street level, sidewalk level.
Street level. Something we see on the bottom with the windows and everything. That's.
Yeah. Yeah, it's actually going to be a, a grill, a wire grill. Our intent is for that to become a green wall and have vines grow up in that over time. So that, again, it adds greenery to the city, but it also was a way to screen parking. But the idea is for that to be open. So it's naturally ventilated as far as the parking that's under the building.
So you've got one way in, one way out. You're going to have two.
There's two entries. There's one off of Third at the middle of the site that Joe just showed. That's two way traffic in and out. And one off of Fourth Avenue towards the end by the.
So you have to go north.
Yeah, that's, that's a hallway.
Fourth Street is one way going north.
Towards the hotel, right. You know, we, we're happy to discuss what makes sense from a traffic standpoint. You know, we got, we do have some flexibility on that, but a lot of it is from, you know, from a civil standpoint, making sure the grades work out for access in and out. So the middle of Third is actually ideal for where we have the for elevation because we also have to think about accessibility. So the, the ADA says that you have to have at least one accessible entry at, at usually at the front door. Not all of them have to be accessible, but of course they like that. So that's our accessible so-called public entry and visitor entry is the front door and Fourth Street. And that's actually the same elevation as where the parking entry occurs on the third street side. So the one part of the site that's a little more challenging is the southwest corner, which is Fulton and Third, which is actually five feet higher that as you progress from the northwest corner along Third up to that corner of the site. So we're trying to balance what is the right parking elevation to allow for accessibility for entries as well as make sense for the, the grade for the parking entries. So what Joe and I just described makes really the most sense from that standpoint.
So what percentage of the ground level is going to be parking? All of it?
All, but can you pull up the?
Probably about ninety five percent.
So there's no, no commercial space in here at all, then?
No, there is.
Coffee shop.
It's kind of hard to see on the ground floor, but there's a coffee shop. You point to it, Joe. Can you see? Yeah, I have to be a college graduate.
How to do that?
So there's, yeah, there is a coffee shop that'll have its own outside entry off of Fourth and remains to be seen whether that's going to be a tenant or operated by the owner of the building, but it's an important amenity for the residents because I, I think of food and dining as a catalyst for socialization and building community. So we felt that's really an important part of it.
Accessible from inside or just from outside?
Yeah, both.
How big is it? What's the square footage of it?
Oh, it's probably, let's see, about, say, eight hundred square feet.
Can you show me where it is there?
Yep. So that, I think, whether it's owned by the landlord or whether it's a tenant, again, I don't, this is up to the owner, whether they allow public access, but I could see that making a lot of sense again from a social standpoint.
Is that the area of the main entrance also?
Yeah, yeah, right by the main entry. We also have the mail room by the main entry. That's another social connection opportunity where people pick up packages or their mail. So we now have a package room. Package lockers are actually bigger than the mailbox area because that's what everybody is getting these days is, you know, stuff from.
Is that, is that the only pedestrian entrance?
No, there's a, that's the so-called front door. There's an entry off of Fulton. So the areas where you see the metal panel, the bay window shaped metal panel, that's meant to be a visual cue for an entry point for folks. So that's true on Fourth Street in the center of the block and it's true on Fulton.
Nothing, nothing on Third.
Excuse me?
Nothing on Third.
No, other than we did add a, a stairway up to the amenity terrace for the fire department. They requested that for access to the building. So we otherwise have access, obviously, in all three street sides for the fire department. The north side is actually same level as again, the parking level. So it's on grid accessible. But that's where people would come and go for the dog park. That's where we're going to have a, a pet spa, which is a very popular feature for people. We want to encourage people to have pets and dogs, especially in the building.
So on the north, I'm sorry, on the north side, there was a dispute with CDTA a while back. And is that a paper street between that and the hotel?
I'd have to defer to the owner and Dean on that, but.
So we are working with CDTA finalizing all that.
Oh, it is.
So it, it is done now. So that is, they have now acquired that as part of the property that they're.
So that would back up right to where the hotel parking and street that they have that goes from Third to Fourth?
That, that is actually, that street you were talking about is on this property.
Is, that is.
It's in that property. The dog park is going to be in that location.
Are you going to put a limit to the size of your dogs that you're going to have in there?
There will be some size limitations within the building. I don't know where we've ended up on the management plan yet.
How far along are you in the project right now? I mean.
Microphone, please.
We've completed schematics, but one of my favorite analogies for architects who often talk enough about what they do or how they do it, you know, it may be a bit of a mystery to people, but we think of ourselves like a prism. So information that gets refracted, whatever color it may be or type it may be, if it doesn't get refracted by ourselves as a, as a virtual prism, then what comes out of it won't reflect that particular input. So I like getting comments from people. I like, I like getting input. I don't view constraints as a problem. Because that's all part of how we refract and combine as best we can, all of that into a solution. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I think that ties together. If you go through the process, what's the timeframe for construction? The winters?
Well, it depends on the approval process, like most projects.
I think that, you know, how far along are you?
We've completed schematics. Yeah, we haven't started construction documents or we have more to do with design development.
If I might, there is concern from the fire department about the use of museum way or for the area location where the dog park is. They are concerned about accessing the southern portion of Best Western. So I would just, I would say to, I recommend to reach out to Chief Behringer, Deputy Chief Behringer and have discussions with him. He had said that it wasn't like a, it, it wasn't a, a full stop. But you would probably really need to coordinate with him to make sure that the fire department could access the Best Western from the south side.
Are they thinking of they want truck access or simply personnel access?
I didn't get that, that far with it. Like, I think they're very used to having truck access. So if that was going to be rescinded, then, you know, there'd have to be some sort of compromise.
Yeah, every building, the way it's designed and constructed is a function of its circumstance. But obviously you can build a building if you build it a certain way where you only have access in one side. I mean, look at New York City or much. But obviously, you can build a building if you build it a certain way where you only have access in one side. I mean, look at New York City or much of Troy. Most buildings have only access from, let's say, the front or the street side. So that's why you build it with the appropriate protection. So in our case, we have access to three sides, so it's not an issue, even though it's a wood building. And I think as far as the hotel, I couldn't comment on what type of construction that is, whether it's the type of circumstance that requires access on that side or not. But I do think there's probably room to accommodate that.
Yeah, I think-
I know we sat with them a little bit at our pre-construction meeting, not our pre-construction, at our workshop meeting. I don't believe this was brought up during that, that time, but maybe it's something, we can certainly meet with them and go over the details and see what we can do.
Yeah, we had, you know, a staff meeting internally and it came up and then, in that meeting. But again, he didn't say that this was like a full stop or anything like that. He just said that this would have to be sort of navigated around to ensure that they could get adequate fire safety and protection to the southern side.
No, we will definitely take that into account as we continue to work through this, these next steps in our process.
Is your dog park going to be fenced in, all fenced in?
Yes.
Anything else, folks? Go ahead, sir. Microphone?
I know people always have comments about trash or heard the conversation about the earlier project. So the plan for our building is to have trash chutes and recycling chutes in the center of the building. It's, there'll be a room right by the elevators in that part of the building. So there'll be compacters for both at the parking level and then mobile carts that are used to wheel out either trash or recycling whenever the truck comes by to pick it up. Because dumpsters are always a nightmare for any type of project. You want it close for convenience, but you don't want it close because of the smell. So this is, this is the best way we've seen so far for multifamily to manage trash and recycling. So that is our plan. So that'll be carts, again, that are wheeled out of the room on the parking level, probably out on the, I'm guessing probably the Third Street side, where there'd be a pull-off lane for trucks. So just so that was clear. Okay?
All right, sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Look forward to seeing you back.
Chair, we do have the applicant Sacred Heart on Zoom. I don't know if that's sufficient. For Sacred Heart, three tens at Spring Street.
Oh, we do. We don't usually do it, but I think this is, this is a-
It's so simple. We don't usually do it, but this is really a technical review. It's where, there's no changes whatsoever to the outside of the building. So I think obviously, there must have been miss, some misunderstanding. I think you should allow it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. This is Tom with TSL. Sorry, I didn't realize there was another part.
Okay, hang on, Mr. Stiles.
Okay.
Couldn't hear you.
We're hoping this is gonna be quick.
For this sketch plan, someone is asking if you're taking public- Come on down.
Okay, then we have that.
Oh, I got it.
Are you commenting on? Okay, yes. Go ahead, please.
So my name's Mike Fusco. I'm one of the owners of the Best Western Franklin Plaza, also an apartment building on Twenty-Fourth Street. For the project, but I do have made one concern that you guys did bring up is that I also in my deed do have a right-of-way on Museum Place that is on my deed and in my survey that, you know, we are not looking to lose also. And I know back when we first got the hotel, that the fire department was also big on us. I'm so glad you brought that up, because that is one of our concerns also. But it is in our deed and it is in our surveys for the Best Western.
Thank you. So the owners will take note of that, I'm sure.
Good evening. Janet, I'll, I'll try to be brief. I, my office overlooked this site for more than twenty years. I know it very, very well. And you are starting at the wrong point of discussion about this project, because this site is an incredible opportunity for the city. And what you're seeing is mediocrity. Any project that does not, any project that does not include plenty of commercial and public space at the ground level on the street for this site is a mistake. You need that. Not only that, the gentleman who was telling us so many things for such a long time here said that, you know, all preservationists do not want you to copy the historic buildings. I am a preservationist for more than fifty years, and I would agree with that. However, you also do not want to do an homage to it, and you don't want to be in the background. You have absolutely great architecture in downtown Troy. And I'm going to recall an Italian as well here, because the great architect, Cora Scarpa, said you need to, you have an obligation to the masterpiece. What that means is that when you have great architecture, when you have a great urban core like Troy, you need to do the best new architecture that you can possibly do for that city and for that space. And you're not seeing that.
Thank you.
Logan, Stephen Maples, I'll be quick about it. Basically, to build upon the last point, that the not having ground floor, retail, commercial, something, community spaces would, would certainly be a liability to the city. It would, this would be a total dead, dead zone. It would just, it would kill all of the street life, making it less safe, making it less vital. All of the things that we talk about in our comprehensive plan, this would harm those. So this, so in, when we're talking about what kind, you know, how we're going to guide this process moving forward, I, I think it is a high responsibility of this, of this board to insist that that ground floor be activated through commercial, through retail, through whatever. There's got to be people moving in and out. That is the only way that we're going to revitalize that, those stretches that, you know, it's, it's currently pretty dead, because there's not anything there. This is the only way that we do that. Further, I'll just note that the parking regulations do talk about the necessity, I think it's in twenty two eighty-five, what is it, two eighty-five sixty-nine, it covers that the entrances to off-street parking should be on side streets. They're both now on the main streets of, of the site. So that is just a very basic dimensional problem on its face. But the most important thing is must be ground, ground floor, retail, commercial, community space, something. Otherwise, this is a tragedy in the making.
Thank you.
How you guys doing tonight? Matthew Lee here, South Troy. So I'm just thinking to myself, that was a former parking garage. We're kind of building the same thing, just with extra steps here a little bit. You know, with the first floor parking garage and then five over ones on top of that. It's kind of pretty stereotypical to what you see in new construction. But I got some questions here just about traffic, circulation and parking. So what if any traffic analysis was submitted, showed an impact of two hundred units on Fourth Street, River Street, Fulton and downtown intersections? Did the developer, the owner, provide any traffic impact studies with the projected peak hours, AM, PM, talking like nine AM, five PM? If so, what intersections were analyzed? Then one final question. Where are the garage entrances and exits? I know you guys put it up there, but I didn't really see them. And I was just wondering, how will cars queue up without backing up into, say, Fourth Street or River Street? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, those are all things for the developer to take into account. We're collecting comments and concerns. And they'll address those things in their further plans, I think. And the S A will be doing traffic studies. Yes?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Echo Goff, and I'm a lifelong resident of Troy. I grew up in Lansingburg, and I'm now a small business owner with a business on Fourth Street right nearby here. And I can say one of the huge draws of Troy is that it's unlike other cities in terms of its architecture, its historical value. And I have to say, more ugly, boring, expensive apartment complexes are going to deter people from wanting to move here. It's also something that is just an eyesore in one of the center areas of the city that everyone comes to for the farmer's market, for downtown things. It does not benefit the residents of Troy in the slightest. It's really only benefiting the property owners. I'd also like to list off a few existing apartment buildings that are very close to this, that have many vacancies. This does not help the people of Troy in the slightest. What we need is green space. What we need are affordable shop places for warm business owners. What we need are grocery stores. We do not need this. So One Six, One One Sixth Ave, the city at Sixth Station. At Two Hundred and One Fifth Ave, the rise at Coller City. Ten King Street, the inside of Troy. Hundred Congress, Saint Vicina. These are all buildings that serve this exact same purpose, that have many vacancies already within a mile. So I ask that you guys consider things that will actually benefit the residents of Troy and not things that will just fill the pockets of more developers without actually considering the place that it sits in.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question as a business owner downtown. Do you see a huge demand for additional commercial space downtown? And how many vacant commercial spaces are there downtown?
There are a fair amount of vacant commercial spaces in general, but what I also see, honestly, the thing that I see the most is a lack of accessible public space, a lack of any kind of green space, a lack of anywhere for the public to congregate that's not just on the sidewalk. One of the things that I mainly see as a business owner is the fact that there's just not anywhere to congregate or, or exist. The closest green space is a private green space, Washington Square Park, that people can't access.
So you would like to see this as a park?
Frankly, I'd like to see it as a park. I doubt that would happen, but at the very least, I would like to see some kind of public space, something that is aimed to help the people of Troy, something that's aimed to not just exist as this private closed-off lot in one of the most center areas of the city. Like, my entire life, I've gone to, you know, there's that very small area, Riverfront Park, but there's really not anywhere with like a playground. I have a three-year-old nephew. I have nowhere to go with him as a playground in that downtown area. And I live and I work downtown, and it's, it makes me sad, too. They talk about there being a grocery store nearby. There's Uncle Sam's. That is a tiny grocery store. That is not enough to sustain this huge apartment complex, talking about its walkability and sustainability. Oh, there's a grocery store nearby. It is a tiny, tiny grocery store. If you don't have a car, you have to go so far to get groceries. There's so many things that this lot could do to benefit the current residents of Troy, not proposing more and more people coming. We have so many apartment buildings. And there are so many vacancies. I just, while sitting down, looked up, every one of the apartment buildings that I listed had at least four vacancies. And that's just them saying the type of unit that is available. That's not even saying what, how many vacancies there are. I know at least those buildings have at least four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Noah Pedrosso. I'm sort of echoing a lot of what other people said, to very briefly echo what she just said. Mostly, I do think a green space would be nice. But again, that's mostly feelings, so I'm coming here mostly for logistical questions, like as, as a resident of downtown Troy, it does feel like, I don't really know if we need more housing. I feel like more green space would help. But also, I understand that, you know, housing is nice and also affordable housing is nice. So I was wondering, do you guys or would, you know, the developer, would they provide that information where the residents of Troy can, you know, make informed decisions about, is this housing actually affordable? Will people actually move into it? Or will it be, you know, people moving from outside Troy and displacing residents that already live here? Or, you know, where would I look to get, where, where should we be looking to make these decisions? Or is it just they're coming in and telling us? Because like, for one thing that was just mentioned, I do agree that they did mention there's a grocery store right across the street, but I agree. Uncle Sam's, Mi Casa, Bargain Grocery, those are like the main grocery stores and you know, Bargain Grocery is pretty good, but there's not enough, is my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you know, like, where I should?
All of that stuff, all that stuff is probably being developed right now. It'll be part of what is presented here over time. This is just the beginning of this whole project.
So just more and more meetings is really the answer. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, then we're going to close the public comment period. And there's no action to be taken on this application at this time. So we will go to the next application, which is Mr. Stiles.
Three ten.
Three ten, Spring Ave. Tom, are you there? Don't, don't even listen.
I'm here. Hello?
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Okay, can you, first of all, I have to say, I'm going to handle the, the proceedings for this application, but I'm going to recuse from questioning, and I'm going to recuse from a vote, because I am involved with your landlord. So, but I'll, I'll chair it as far as, until we get to questions and vote.
Sure.
All right. So would you give us a little bit of sketch here? I think we already pretty much understand, but just tell us what's going on here quickly, please.
So the school had announced its closure. We had been at the school for sixteen years, running school age programs, after-school programs and summer camps for older kids. The mission of the, the church wanted to continue its mission of outreach and education in spite of the closure of the school. So they offered us to extend our programming under lease, which would help them, obviously, you know, pay for the building. So we had a lot of experience, TSL Ventures, in doing UPK programs in partnership with various local school districts. So we decided to continue that with Troy City School District, and we did earn a contract from them to run four universal preschool programs there, which is the programs the school, Sacred Heart School, previously run. So no changes as far as, as the locations of where those classrooms are being held, and just basically a change of partnership. The school closes, we take over. We run the UPK programs along with our own programs that we've been running there for sixteen years. The church, you know, gets paid a lease, which helps them pay for the building and no substantial revisions, no substantial, and no, basically, no, no changes in the usage or, or mission or anything like that. We just kind of continue where they left off, or a private umbrella.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, no questions. Is there anybody from the public want to comment on this application? No? Okay, then.
Make a motion that we accept their application is final and approve the, approve the project.
I'll second.
Yes. Sorry.
Microphone, please. Any discussion from the board?
We're good.
No.
We're good. All right.
Just to vote.
Vote.
Aye.
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 And I will recuse because of consent. Motion carries. Your application is approved, Mr. Stiles. Good luck there.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your patience and time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You can stay with us if you'd like. Oh, I guess. Ten Eleven, Second Avenue. Representative, the applicant? Representative, the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. John O'Hern from Couch White, attorney for the applicant. Also with me is Annie Brick, Joe D'Anabel from EDP, and Justin DiVirgilio from Hartken. Do you want me to wait for Chris or do you want me to just?
You can go ahead.
All right.
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Okay. So we are here tonight essentially for the board to discuss assuming lead agency status. Notices went out in late June, I believe it was, right Eric?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so it wasn't in time to be on for the July meeting, so we are here tonight for that. Once the board assumes lead agency status, we will, you know, submit our full seeker package, so to call it, environmental studies and things like that regarding the project. Recently, there were some correspondence, some comments regarding the project and SHPO and consultation. So we didn't submit these for this meeting simply because we were waiting for the board to assume lead agency status. So it was the proper agency to submit this stuff to. But we went ahead and let staff and Rick and Chris know that we were going to pass these to Eric tonight and discuss them with the board and let them know what's going on. So I'm just going to give Eric a couple packets that have two different letters from SHPO, State Historic Preservation, Preservation Office regarding consultations for the project. So there's, there's two different letters from SHPO because obviously we have two different aspects, right? We'll just call them above-ground considerations and below-ground considerations. So the first letter you have is a May 15th letter from SHPO. That is SHPO's sign-off on the visual of the site and the project. That, that's the, the above-ground impacts, right? So that is SHPO's sign-off on the coloring, the landscaping, et cetera, given the historic district. The second letter that is going around is a May 28th, 2025 letter from SHPO. I know some of you may have heard this before, but I don't know if we've ever discussed it previously in detail with this board, which we will do more so when lead agency is established. But i- in a high level, essentially, there are some historical Loki on this site that have been identified in phase one and phase two. I have Justin here who can speak to that stuff more later if the board has more questions. But essentially, the process, when you have these sites in a development project, there's two options. It is to either avoid the disturbance or complete a phase three data recovery plan. And there are certain portions where we cannot avoid, given, you know, the constraints on the site. So what you have in the May 28th letter is SHPO's review and sign-off of our phase three data recovery plan for the project. So I know there's been some comments and concerns about that stuff. So like I mentioned earlier, traditionally, we would wait until the board establishes itself as lead agency to provide this, but given recent comments and concerns, we've decided to provide it now in order to show the essentially a sign-off from SHPO.
How does the applicant feel about, I mean, the SHPO letter notes that the Stockbridge Muncie may request to visit the site during the data retrieval fieldwork. Is the applicant willing to commit to allowing them to visit the site during the retrievals?
Yeah, that's not an issue. And we've also, I think we've also agreed that we would work with them in determining where any recovered artifacts should go, how they should be treated, whether it's they want to take possession of them or they go to the state museum, we're open to that.
Um, who would actually be doing the excavation would? Or would there be a?
Are you, are you talking about the data recovery?
Yes, yes.
Good evening. My name is Justin DiVirgilio. I'm president and owner of Hartken Archaeological Associates, Rensselaer County cultural resource management firm that specializes in exactly this type of archaeological work. Yeah, we've been the contractor both for this project and on the same site for the EPA waterline that crossed the Hudson River for, prior to the PCB removal project. That impacted a portion of this same archaeological site. We went as a contractor to the EPA, went through the same kind of staged process of identifying the site. And then because avoidance of it was not feasible, they had to cross the river at that point. We did this same sort of mitigation effort called the phase three data retrieval on the portion that the EPA mitigated and we're proposing very comparable approach to the portions of the site that this project will impact.
What did you find there?
Yeah, the, the site is, it's really a two main components. Principally, it's a quarry site. So this is indeed a quarry site. It's indigenous population. So it was all used thousands of years ago, well before Europeans arrived. And the material being quarried, we call it chirp. It's a type of flint that was one of the most preferred stone types for tool making. There's in-the-bedrock outcrops on the site. There are seams of this flint material that were easily accessible. They didn't need to dig significantly. They could just work right from the exposed outcrop faces. That's the main component of the site. And then there's a somewhat low-lying portion, most of which is being avoided by the project, but there's a small portion of that low-lying area that the project will impact. That area had a campsite. So river access, traveling by river, coming to quarry and extract out blocks that they could take away with them and use to produce tools at, at other locations at a later date. But they needed a place to camp while they were there gathering this resource. And that's what this flat, flat zone was. So we'll be looking at both the areas that they were quarrying and we'll be looking at the area that they were using as a camp while visiting the site.
Is there evidence of them quarrying or just evidence of the materials that they would be quarrying?
Yeah, the, the, there is evidence of the quarry. It's like with modern day quarrying for building stone materials, for example, you end up with a lot of talus, sort of the material that's not usable, that has to be cut away to get at what you want. That's the number one thing that you find in terms of volume or count. That's the biggest thing. But then, once we get there, we, we have some methods that we use to try to estimate how much ore they were extracting from a site. And we use this to compare the relative importance of different quarry sites up and down the Hudson Valley and beyond.
So would there have been tools used or tool marks or anything like that?
There, yeah, there are. The, the tools are relatively simple in form. You know, the biggest would be usually quartzite cobbles, you know, very hard stone material. They also used wooden wedges. But those, as you can imagine, they don't survive the thousands of years. So we don't find any of the organic material tools that they used, but the hammer stones and also what we call anvils. So just like an anvil would be used for blacksmithing, it'd be a particularly large, massive rock that they would place a block of ore that they were trying to high-grade. And then they would have smaller cobbles that they would use as hammer stones. And we can tell from the types of pitting that you see on these quarry stones when they were used for that kind of activity. So it's to the naked eye, if you were to pick it up, or the untrained eye, I should say, to pick it up, you might not recognize it as having been a tool. But when you start to pay attention to the types of, of wear that they exhibit, you can tell the difference of what was used as a tool versus what was just laying around. Also, because this is not an area that naturally has cobbles, when you start to find quartzite cobbles on the site, you know that they were imported by people.
And what will the disturbance, what disturbance will happen to these two areas that you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's, the quarry site is actually part of a really long formation that started where the Hanaford was, continues on up through that whole ridge until to the north where you're into Scaticoke and the river takes, you know, the two quick, quick bends. That entire formation was all one massive series of bedrock outcrops. So there's some places where you have a bedrock, bedrock outcrop, you go another 50 feet and there's nothing. So each of these outcrops is where the centers of the quarrying activity were. So that's the focus. When, when John mentioned that there were a number of different low side, which we call just kind of the centers of, of activity, past activity, those are the areas that we're focusing our work on.
I'm focusing on.
So these areas that, based on our prior testing, have showed us there's remnants from the quarrying material. So it's really where the bedrock outcrops were accessible at ground surface thousands of years ago when people were quarrying.
So my question is, will those areas be disturbed by this project?
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, so this whole, this whole process for the archaeological review, it typically goes through three phases. First phase is just focused on presence or absence. Is there an archaeological site here? Because of our prior work for that EPA project, we already knew the answer to that question. So then we go to the second phase, which is, we call it a site evaluation. You're asking which parts of the site are national register eligible, or shorthand, we just say significant. Significant means that there's real information that could be gathered by additional examination and excavation of a site. We've, we've done the phase one and phase two. We made the recommendation that the site was significant. The SHPO concurred with that. We went through several rounds of considering, or the project team did, several rounds of considering different configurations of the site plan to try to avoid what was feasible. The portion where avoidance is feasible is on the portion of the site they're saying was used more as a camp. I think it works out to be roughly 50% of that area is preserved. The other 50% will be impacted. And then the three areas where the quarrying activity was taking place, those will be impacted. So to mitigate those impacts is the scope of work that in the, is it the May 28th letter? Yeah, the May 28th letter addresses, we submitted a proposed work plan to mitigate that impact on those portions of the site. And that's what the SHPO has concurred with.
Do we have that?
You don't have the work plan. That would be something that we could provide following the lead agency determination, but you do have the SHPO letter concurring with that work.
Right. We don't know what they concurred.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah. And when you talk about the campsite, is it a campsite by topography or is there evidence that there was camping there?
Yeah. Yes to both, really. The, just like nowadays, if you were to go camping, you're probably unlikely to pick the spot that's a steep slope. So people tended to favor relatively flat areas. And people tended to favor spots that had some source of water pretty close by. And that portion of this site checks both of those boxes.
But no, any, any implements or tools or anything?
So yes, there, in the prior testing, there were some tools and also some, some evidence from one of the things, even if we don't find a fire pit, we find rocks that have been cracked because they've been put in a fire and then often used to heat a liquid for cooking. And that sudden change in temperature causes a thermal shock and causes the, the rocks to break in a very identifiable way. So we did find some of those so that that's a sign that we, it's a sign of camping. People were there cooking food.
But no pottery showered.
No, we, we, not, not to this point. Based on what we've seen so far, it predates the period of pottery-making technology here in the Northeast. So we're not expecting pottery, but people may have visited the site multiple times over millennia. So that is a possibility that we can find.
What is the era that you think it was used for camping and tool production?
Yeah, we, we, we don't have a lot of data points to, to give that to us, but it's looking like it's the late Archaic period. So we are looking, I'm just a little bit of a, of a guess based on what we have. The information that we have to fuel the state, we're probably looking at maybe 6,000 years ago, up to 2,000 years ago.
Not much. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so what, what's your process? I mean, what, how do you, how do you do your job?
Yeah. So like the whole, all of the phases or are you interested in just what's?
What do you do to collect this?
Yeah.
Collect the artifact?
Yeah. Let's see, there's, we use a number of different techniques. So we'll be doing some laser scanning. So this gives us a really high-resolution, three-dimensional record of the topography. So it's, imagine like a topographic map, but super detailed, like to the fraction of an inch. And we'll be focusing on all those areas where the ore was extracted and then kind of placing them in the, in the topographic context. We'll be, we'll be starting with that. We'll be doing some just clearing of all the vegetation, you know, as part of that. So we get a, a real picture of the, the quarrying activity. We'll be, I mentioned those talus. That's all the waste that gets deposited when you're extracting the ore that you want. We'll be removing that in some select locations to help us estimate the volume. We'll be using that volume to do some reconstructions of what those core, the size of those quarry faces prior to all the quarrying activity. We'll be doing excavations in select areas. So we already know from our prior work where the activity was concentrated. We'll be placing larger excavations, excavation blocks in some of those areas to recover more materials. And then one of the focuses will be down in that portion where the campsite is. That's the area we, we've, if we take our work on this site plus the work on that EPA project that is least studied, so we know the least about what's going on there. And that's where a lot of the focus will be, will be looking for, we call them features, but it's like signs of fire pits that might have been used for, for camping. We're not expecting any evidence of structures. It's, it's very early for that. But we would be looking for signs of fire pits or different, we call them roasting platforms, these big aggregations of, of rock that were heated with charcoal and then used to roast vegetables, fish, all sorts of foods. We'll certainly be looking for other artifacts, whether or not there is any pottery present. Because pottery is, is one of the most informative artifact types on these sorts of sites. We can analyze the residues inside the pottery to get all sorts of information about what sort of foods were being consumed or stored in the, in the vessels. When the field work is over, well, I should say, while we're doing the field work, every artifact that we collect gets pinned to its precise location and labeled appropriately. And labeled appropriately, and then afterwards we pull out of the field. We prepare a preliminary. Very basic report at first, usually typically a couple of weeks after we come out of the field. And submit that to the ship office. The ship office reviews that and says, okay, yes, we are satisfied. That this meets the fieldwork component of that work plan. And they will typically recommend to the permitting agency that they grant the applicant. The permit to proceed with any site work. While that is beginning, we continue with our our writing process. There's three main components that come out of that, we have a a technical report that we write, gets filed with the state. The ship office with the state museum. A, there's some kind of like public education component, the technical. Report has a lot of jargon in it, so it's not the most accessible to members of the public. But there'll be some kind of public output that can take the form of presentation, some projects. We actually have, we produce public volume, something that's just more readable. And then that will get distributed to public repositories around. And then the third component is to. Provide for the long term storage and and protection of the artifact collection that came out of it. And as was mentioned before, there is the possibility that that could be. The Stockbridge Muncie community of Mohican Indians, they have taken some collections, my understanding is generally they don't have. The capacity at present to take. Many more collections, so I think the more likely location would be that the New York State Museum takes possession of it.
Is most of your artifacts in the Overburden or is it in the rock itself?
It's. It's it's going to depend which component, the quarry component, it's all kind of right on the surface, I mean, it's covered by. Centuries of of leaf litter and that kind of stuff, but it's very close to the surface down on the. The campsite. It is probably within the top eighteen to twenty four inches. There, it's not an active actively growing flood plain at this point. But at times in the past, it was still accumulating sediments from seasonal floods. So some of those artifacts get buried by flood deposits from from centuries afterwards, so that part's a little bit deeper.
So pretty much when you get down to rock.
Yeah.
Here is pretty much.
It's over, yeah, it's over, yeah, yep.
Thank you very much.
The map that you're showing here now, does that? Say where you're going to be digging that yellow circle, what is what is he showing up there, does it have nothing to do with what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the yellow circle is. Yeah, yeah, okay, I got you now. Yeah, so the the areas that I was saying were the concentrations of where the quarrying activity are. Are these. These three here, okay? And then the area that was kind of the principally the camping activity is this spot in blue. This is also a little bit of the quarry debris that makes it up here, and generally if. The redder the color looks, that means there's more density of artifacts. So, yeah, so this is the area where we'd be focusing our work on that campsite and then for the quarries. Here, here and here are the spots we'll be looking at.
So when you do that and you're starting to look for everything you're looking for in that yellow area, does that? Mean you're going to have to take trees down or anything like that, or you're just going under the the soil and looking for what you need to see?
What we are representing in these two maps, the the yellow in the blue area, if you look at the next map, that's where the highest density of. Features were found, what we're showing here in that yellow is that is the area where the highest density was founded, we're not disturbing that. As part of this project that is remaining as is, there's large trees there, we're keeping that as a park like setting in front of the buildings.
So he's not going to be digging there or looking for anything in there as he goes along now?
So, yeah, as I was saying earlier, a portion of the the camp location does fall within the project. A portion is in the avoidance area that's being preserved, so. Our work will be in the portion of the campsite that is being impacted by the project.
Can I ask, when you start finding artifacts, you say Stockbridge Muncie might not have a big enough space to do it, they might be going to the museum. Is there any way that after this project has been approved and it's moving right along? That any of those artifacts can be kept at this site as an educational tool? Maybe in a pavilion, maybe along your roots, you know, your paths. And you could have a little sample of this and tell the history of it, so that. If you do your boat lunch, you're going to have the thing going all the way around and zip it around and down to the water. If you want to be able to use your P D D as a public benefit, why couldn't that be part of that benefit? Is educating people as to what was there and maybe show what was there?
So this does come up in certain circumstances. I know the New York State Museum stance on it is if they're taking a collection. They want the entire, everything associated with the site to be deeded to them. They will sometimes then negotiate a long term loan of select items. Right back again, but the ownership would be transferred to them and a loan would be possible. Typically, though, nowadays, we don't tend to. Recommend that too much because we have the capacity to easily fabricate with three D printing. Very accurate replicas. And we we have that equipment at my firm as well, so we can three D scan any object that's of particular interest. Fabricate a replica, what's included in the data retrieval plan, which I know you don't have yet, but you will have at one point is. The preparation of a interpretive panel. And an interpretive panel, the ones we typically. Do, they're like a high density laminate, so they're, it's not something that's printed at staples and is is not going to age. They look very professional and they could be made to include. A space to place with replicas of selected artifacts.
I've been over to the Coles Falls, it's been quite a few years, but they have gorgeous signage and everything over there, is that something?
Yeah, it's that's exactly the type of process that we use as well.
Would the Stockbridge Muncie community have preference and priority if they wanted this collection?
The, I I know that the ship is in support of that, the applicant's in support of that. And the state museum makes no claim on it, so they just, they are. They're probably the number one repository for archaeological collections in the state. But I know all parties involved would support that if the stock.
The state museum, they're not accessible to the public, are they, very, not very accessible?
Oh, no, they are, yeah, yeah, it's it's, you can't just walk in, but they. Archaeological collections are sometimes used in rotating exhibits there, but largely it's open to. People by appointment if you want to do the research, so I know the various tribal nations, for example, they. Regularly visit the state museum to examine collections and other members of the public as well.
And and would it be correct to say that the bottom line is that? This really belongs to the owner of the property and they could say nobody's taken it nowhere. But that might affect approvals and so on, but the state doesn't have any right to say we're going to take this stuff, is that correct?
Exactly right, yes, and the the work plan already specifies that the intent to. Do the deed of gift and and make the offer to the repository, yeah.
But also one last question from me. So I understand that the yellow circle indicates the highest intensity, I guess, of evidence. What proportion of that is of the total? I mean, that's where it's most intense, but the whole area also have artifacts?
Yeah, Joe, can you put on the the one that had the numbers and the the heat map on it again? Yeah, everything that has a any kind of color is in the vicinity of where some artifacts were.
So would it be fair to say that virtually everything that's there is going to be obliterated by this project? Other than what you remove in the light of artifacts?
There will be. So we're all out here, we're out of it. And then the, you know, as Joe's is indicated with the the circle there. You know, really that that key portion lines up with where the preservation is. Yeah, yes, and the. The area that's in the kind of impact zone of the project is. Any kind of ground activity happening there, so. As we get down toward this area, most of the impact is really just related to achieving the grade for a path. So there'll be, along with that grading. Will be. Along with that. That path, we will be increasing the public accessibility of the project. So for the portions of the site that are being preserved. One of the steps that we're taking is to place some clean fill on top of, and this has been. Discussed with the ship O D E C and the Stockbridge Muncie at a prior site visit. To encapsulate and to protect, like help ensure the preservation of any materials in the portion of the site that are being.
The site of the buildings themselves.
Yeah.
What's, are you going to be removing any artifacts from the sites of the buildings before the buildings are built?
Yeah, we'll be doing all of our work before. Any any site construction.
Are you going to be doing that in all of those yellow areas there?
Well, it's. The standard for the base three data retrieval is usually to get like a two to three. Or maybe a five percent sample of the site, so we never collect anything approaching a hundred percent unless. The site is really tiny, like a few square feet. So we're always working with a very small sample.
So that just to be a record of what.
Exactly, yes.
Area, but not a complete record.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So if you look at the pink, those are the low sea that we were talking about before, the actual buildings that impact it are. Pretty small spots.
I have two questions if if you would. One, does the site contain? Either finish points or half finished points?
I'm working from my memory at this point, so I I can't give you the exact number, but a couple. Like fewer than five, two, three.
So the the finish, the quarrying was done there, but the finishing was not.
Correct, yeah, the 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 general conception is that. What was being taken away from the sites are. Blocks of high quality ore that are small enough to carry relatively easily. But would then be worked later and typically it was a series of steps, they would have a a block. That they would break into a series that we call them blanks. A blank is, if you can imagine, a projectile point before it's been formed, kind of the. Rectangular block that would encapsulate that. And then that's what they would do when they were ready to produce a tool. So it's it's still blockier stuff, chunks of ore is is what we believe that they were principally extracted.
And my second question is what experience have either you or or Harkin? What is your experience dealing with the? Dealing with and communicating with the Stockbridge Muncie in terms of consultation or site visits and all that?
Yeah, well, we've done for this project, we've already done two site visits with the Stockbridge Muncie. One was with them alone, the other was with them in conjunction with ship and. Representative from the D E C. The way the process is set up is for government to government relations, so we never take the lead. On consultation with any of the tribal nations, we play a supporting role. So if it's a project and there's a state agency involved, that agency, so in the in this case it would be D C. Would have that government to government relation. And then as they need any support from us, that's where we step in, so we don't lead the process. But we we do that support, you know, all the time, it it happened during the EPA project. The South Troy Industrial Road Project. It's happened for, I'm Van Skye Island, there's several projects that we've done, we found an early. Traders hut that had evidence of both the Native American occupation as well as the early traders. We've had extensive consultation with them like that, so, you know, regularly, but just always were. Somewhat in the background, you know, we take the lead and just support the agencies in their consultation.
I I guess I wonder, do they participate in the data retrieval in any way?
They they don't participate in the sense of. Actually doing any of the digging or or doing the analytical work. But sometimes members or representatives of the tribal nations will come out and observe. The work while it's happening. They, they're free to, you know, look at anything that we find out at the ground, it's usually very collegial. The the dynamic there. If they have interest in seeing the materials when we get them back to our laboratory and have the collection all laid out. They're welcome to and sometimes do come by our office to examine collections, so they don't do the work, but they may be. Engaged in that way.
And lastly, what kind of? So if there is a potentially sensitive find of sort of whatever sort, I don't really know much about your field, but. Do you directly notify the the tribe or do you notify ship to notify the tribe? How does that work?
Yeah, we, our first step would be to notify the ship. And the any other involved. State and there's no federal agencies on this one for projects that have federal involvement, we notify those agencies. They make very clear that they want to be the ones to have that government to government relationship with the tribal nations. So they do that, once that connection's been made, if there's questions or just kind of detailed information. Then we get together on a a group conference call or we meet together on the site. And there are other local examples, you know, of exactly this, where we've found. Artifact types that are associated with. Ceremonial practices, so as soon as we find this, we're we're not waiting till the report at the end, we. Initiate that communication right at that point in time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on top of Rick's, you said the Stockbridge Muncie was there twice? Has that been recently or was that the past several years ago?
Yeah, over the past several years, probably one was maybe three, four years ago. And then the other was as soon as the ground thawed this year, so like once all the snow had melted, so it was probably. Late March, yeah, the they've had some, the Stockbridge Muncie community has had some change in. Their staffing, so it was new people involved that hadn't toured the site before, so that's why we did another tour.
Just clarify for me that the areas, I think it's purple or red there, is that, that's the quarry areas, is it?
Well, the the four. Magenta blobs are, yeah, they're they're the different concentration, areas of concentration. So this one's quarry, this one's quarry, this one's quarry, and then this one is kind of. Part camp and then there's a little bit of quarry materials in there as well.
Does it, does that indicate that most of that outcropping, natural outcropping will remain?
Yeah, the, the, I mean, that's really a question more for, I think, Joe to answer on how much material is, is being, being removed. So I'll, I'll hand that off to him to answer. Well, he, you're asking specifically about the bedrock outcrops. Yeah.
Yeah, it does depend on exactly where they're going to be. There is excavations in this area, there's filling. Sorry. There is excavations, obviously anywhere there is a road, utility, even the trail, there are going to be excavations and fills. Some areas are going to be excavated where that outcropping will be taken away. Other areas are going to be filled in which we're then going with the encapsulation process where we're leaving any potential artifacts directly in the ground.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? This gentleman, anybody?
Kind of have a funny question. Say the owner was just sitting on the site not developing it. Would there be any approvals necessary in order to do something similar to a phase three? They're just a history nerd and wanted to, I'm, I'm just, I'm curious.
So you mean like someone just start digging in the backyard?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
The only, the only limitation that I'm aware of is just like with any other earth movement, if we were to open up enough ground, then we need to deal with stormwater, yeah.
And also is, um, the, you mentioned like there could possibly be a public presentation. Is that paid for by the applicant, the developer through you or is that subsidized through?
It's not subsidized. Yes, it is a component of the data retrieval plan to have a public information component. But also my firm, at any point in time, if, if any group asks us to do a, a public talk, we tell them what talks about resources in their community that we're equipped to, to provide. And we do that as a free service, so.
A bit of a history lesson today, so appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Let's see if, if anybody in the public wants to comment on this. Now, let me just caution you that the only thing that the board is considering tonight is whether or not to take lead agency status. So if you have comments or questions, they should be addressed to that issue alone. All of these other matters that are identified in the staff report will be taken up in due course. But the first order of business before we can get to any of that is to determine whether or not we are the lead agency. So if you want to speak on that topic, please come forward.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Jessica Bennett. I live at 1009 Second Avenue, immediately adjacent to the site. Can you hear me all right?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know it's been a long night and I promise to keep it brief. As lead agency, which I'm assuming you will be at this point, the next step is to approve the application. There are still some.
No, there's many steps before that, I think.
What's before approving the application?
That's, your assumption is incorrect. Well, I'm not going to get into all of that. Just talk about the lead agency status, all right?
Okay. Well, wait, I don't know if you're going to be lead agency or not.
We don't know that either. We're going to talk about it after we hear your comments on it and see what your ideas are on that. That's what we're here for tonight, to decide if we're going to take lead agency status. We've indicated our intent to do so, but we haven't done it yet.
But the 30, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but hasn't the 30 day timeline passed for other agencies to comment back?
We're not getting into all of that. Just talk to us about what your idea is about who should be the lead agency.
I think you should be the lead agency.
Okay, thank you. We probably will be, but we're going to talk about it after we hear what the public thinks about it.
Okay, um, I do think that should have been the last meeting where you were declaring your intent to lead. But yeah, I do think you are the, the right board. As you know, we've had, there's a long history with this project, going back five years. And the hope of the public had always been for the former planning commission, but now certainly the planning board is the best suited body in the city of Troy to be lead agency. My understanding of Seeker is that the 30 day notice goes out, which we certainly don't know when the, the letters went in the mail. But I do believe since that was the June meeting and we're now in August, that that 30 day timeline has now passed.
Okay, good, thank you if that's your conclusion, but anything else to say?
What am I allowed to comment on? Because I do have some comments on the EAF.
You've already told us that you think we should have lead agency status. That's the only thing that's being considered tonight. So we appreciate you recommending that it be this board and we will talk about that after we hear what the rest of the public feels about that. There'll be plenty of opportunity for you to comment on any other things in this whole project. This is going to be a little while before it's done, I believe.
Certainly, certainly, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I just, I thought that had already been decided with the intent, intent to be letters that went out. I, isn't it kind of immutable point unless other involved agencies have responded and declared their desire to lead? At which point the DEC then decides?
Yes, the board previously declared its intent to act as lead agency. There's a 30 day period during which other involved agencies can object. No objection has been received from another involved agency. That doesn't, but the board still needs to establish if it is lead agency.
Thank you. I, I didn't understand that, thank you. All right, well, I wish you luck.
You have to defer to the lawyer for that kind of stuff.
Well, Seeker is a beast, as you all know, but I look forward to working with them in the future and I am hopeful that this is going to go well.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to comment?
Hello, everybody, me again. I'm going to agree that I think that this body is the most appropriate body for lead agency. I think that there is a lot of material already at your fingertips that is, that already have some factual errors in the, the short form itself have some factual errors in it. So I'm going to encourage you, please make sure that you really scrutinize those things. And then I'm going to refer to a lot of the other things that were discussed tonight. You know, we, this is one person, this is one form of evidence. I think it's incumbent upon, as you begin this process, ensuring that we have impartial, independent evidence. And so there, there's a full picture, not clouded by various, you know, the, the, the compensation structures that, that are inherent in this process. So I wish you luck and I'm with, and I know that we have, as I'll remind you that you have that incredible amount of power to seek out your own independent experts and expertise. So I'm going to just encourage, please exercise that power. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please go forward.
I'm sorry that public comment has to be so narrowly focused when we sat here for three and a half hours and we're supposed to be the third item on the agenda. So, but I mean, I do also agree that the planning board is the appropriate agency to be the lead agency. But we, at the same time, need to consider and we need to be assured the seeker process will be thorough and will be fair and will not be the sham job that it was when this project first came up. And I, in, before the May meeting, when you were first considering this issue of lead agency, I submitted a few pages of comments before, through Eric, for the planning board, which are, were an item by item, line item through the seeker application that showed the misrepresentations and the inaccuracies and the things that were simply wrong in the application. We had discussion tonight about SHPO and apparently that has initially been resolved. I do appreciate the fact that Justin explained the archaeology and the importance of that, which he did a great job. And he also noted the cliff at the south end of the site. And the developer then simply said, well, yes, we're going to take the cliff down. So these are the kinds of things that you need to be thinking about, that you need to be looking at and thinking about critically. Because in my own analysis, 75% of the site will be excavated, cut, or filled with their project, 75% of the site. And that is not reflected in what the seeker, what the original part one seeker says. There are many other inaccuracies in there and misrepresentations. Places where they said, oh yeah, there's a, there's a river, there's going to be some impact on the river. No description at all as to what that impact on the river will be. Historic sites. People's Island is mentioned as a historic site, but right across the river, we have a national register historic site at the village of Waterford, which directly faces this site. That is not considered at all. There are many things in this seeker application. I would encourage you to go back and look at some of the light items that I gave you in my May comments and to seriously consider whether from a topographical point of view, ecological point of view, traffic, noise, visual impact, impact on historic resources, whether this is a suitable project for this site. That is why we have Seeker. That's the very purpose of Seeker is to determine whether it is suitable and what those impacts actually are. So you have a big job ahead of you as lead agency. And I hopefully rest assured that you will be taking that very seriously and very diligently. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello again, everyone. Whew, it's been a bit of a long night, hasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm excited to go home and eat some food. But first, I would like to talk about, wow, how amazing is it that in Troy, hearing the archaeology, hearing everything spoke, that we have evidence of civilization from pre pottery age? That's just amazing. And the fact that we have that in Troy somewhere that's already so known for its American history. So why, why are we talking about bulldozing something that could become a huge asset to the city and to the city's identity and its history? Why, why are we even talking about bulldozing something that has such amazing historical value that once it's done, you can never get it back? It's frankly, we've done enough terrible things to the indigenous people over here. If we have something so ancient and precious and things that we could gain so much knowledge for, why, why do we need to put a housing development there at all?
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Who, who do you think would be better suited to address your concerns as lead agency?
I think you guys would be best suited to, yes, thank you, I appreciate that. But also, I have to say, a bunch of us did wait three and a half hours to speak on this and it being such a narrow scope of public comment.
Well, you can talk all, all you want, but you can't do it right here. So we, we're focusing on a question that we need to answer.
And, and this is public comment about this very specific thing. I do believe you guys are best as lead agency and I look forward to how you will serve this. And I also, sorry, I'm really hope that we get what we need, which is the positive declaration for the State Environment Quality Review Act.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone else? Yes.
Agency as well. I do, do think you should be the lead agency. Monica Woollett. Okay, yeah, so I'll be brief. I just want to.
Could you speak closer to your mic, please?
I don't think I could do that without eating it. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that.
Please.
I might get a little hungry. I, I live in Waterford, New York and it's, I, I guess you'd have to go there to see how closely it is to this proposed site. It's very narrow and you can, noise is a huge issue, okay? Just want you guys to be aware of it as lead agency, you know? You could, you could hear a pin drop, really, in boats going by. Everything's very loud and you guys know that you've been on this earth a long time, you know, that it's watered. Sound travels quickly over water. So we have, we were right there in Waterford and it's very noisy, little things. So consider that noise, consider Waterford. And there's, other considerations are the traffic. We.
Let's focus on lead agency status.
Yeah, okay, but let me just quickly say, because these are very important things. As you being a lead agency, you have to consider the people across the river. Okay, I'm looking for a traffic study across the river. It's a state bridge and we have traffic, like it's, it's unbelievable, the congestion. It goes down the side streets right now. Can you imagine what it'll be like with 175 new apartments coming across? Because that's what they do. They go across the bridge, they cut down First Street and over, and it's becoming like a highly trafficked area. So that, that's my, my major consideration. And then I see eagles flying all over the place and I see them nesting there. So we've got the wildlife, they, they go to People's Island and, and back and there's all kinds of wildlife there. And the other consideration that I think is important is the dynamite. There's kind of be something that they're going to bulldoze. How can you not use dynamite? And, and these buildings are so close, the proposed buildings are so close to that cliff. All these things I just mentioned are just going to be like bizarre, really. Very, because those are the things I really wanted to speak about and.
So your conclusion is that this board should be the lead agency or not?
Yes, I do believe you should be the lead agency, but I'm saying these things, I really wanted to drill down into them because it's important. It's important to all of us and the consideration of the years, like the woman I've spoke previously, our history, our archaeology, that, that's also very important to all of us. Okay, there'll be other meetings, so.
All right. Thank you. Leave the mic there when you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next.
Hello. My name is Rachel Carter and I live, I'm a neighbor to the site. I live in D1 and I do think very much that you should be the lead agency for this project. And I really think that because you're best suited to posdeck this project and give it the consideration and the studies that the public have been asking for, for the past five years, because it has a significant ecological, environmental, historical and cultural impact on the site. And I will leave it at that.
Well, thank you very much. Hello.
Kathy Gavitt, Waterford, New York. Um, I just, yes, lead agency. And the reason is.
Thank you very much, see you tomorrow.
Just hear me out. You saw the yellow spots on the screen where this is major archaeological. I want you to consider looking into Papskenny Preserve in East Greenbush on the river. Papskenny, you know what I mean, on the river, south of here. It's a national, or it's a preserve that East Greenbush has in Rensselaer County under the land trust. And it just was renewed in 2021. So that's, that's what I want to say, consider that. They have the Stockbridge-Muncie native site there too. So would, they have trails, you can go in and have picnic there, but it's, it's under a preserve, under a land trust. So just consider that when you're doing your.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come down.
Evening, board. Arthur Wayne, once again. I think it's fair to say that there's a pretty big elephant standing in the room as wearing neon. and is wearing a neon sign saying that we'd like to talk more about things that aren't just lead agency. So what I'd like to say is, I think it put a lot of people in this room at ease and help assuage their concerns if this board would let us know when it would be appropriate for the community to come forward with concerns that aren't regarding whether or not y'all are lead agency. That being said, you guys seem like the best suited organization to take up that role.
Okay, well, to assuage your concerns, there'll be opportunities. Probably going to be many more steps before this project is approved, if it is ever approved. And at each of those steps, your public will be able to address whatever the relevant question is at that time. And all of these things that you folks have expressed concern about are going to have to be addressed by the applicant at some point. And that point will be evident when the agendas come out. I'm not sure, you know, when they're going to move forward with what. But each time, I think virtually every time, you'll have an opportunity to, to comment on what it is they're proposing to do at that step, stage. Okay.
Thank you for your answer.
Is there anyone else?
I'm Emma Naperta. I live in Lanningburg. I'm just curious, like, why was this the only proposal that we had a specific topic that the public commentary had to be about?
This is the only thing that was on to determine lead agency status tonight.
Okay. Is there a way for in future agendas for that to be made clear to the public? Because I know a lot of us here waited a long time to share our thoughts.
We were here long before you.
And you're paid for that. That is your duty as a public servant.
Fine, but when you got here, you were told what we're kind of considering tonight.
Last.
Somebody has to be last. Do you want to address the question of lead agency status?
I think you guys should be lead agency status. And I think in the future, things could be a little bit more organized to benefit your constituents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Anyone else like to comment? Yes, come on down.
Hi, my name is Arden. I live in Lanningburg. Yes, I think you guys should be the lead agency, but I realized you guys did get here long before us. I went to work at seven AM today. It is nine thirty at night. I have to go to work at seven AM tomorrow too. This was the third thing on the agenda. So if we are only allowed to comment on whether you guys are lead agency, don't you think it would maybe set a good example for you guys to like, keep your agenda items in line? And just like, be third when you're supposed to be third? Because I'm pretty frustrated that it's nine thirty at night and I'm still here because I waited for public comment. I had to come all the way out here to determine, oh, it's just going to be lead agency. This was a waste of my time tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Anything else? Is there anybody else who wants to comment? Is there anyone who would like to come down to the microphone and comment on lead agency status? Okay, if not, is there anything else you need to do on this? So we will need, is there a motion?
So at this point, we've received everything back from the interested agencies?
So we did receive one negative comment from an interested agency. However, interested agencies do not have jurisdiction. They're not in a position to fund or approve the project. So the, the relevant legal inquiry is whether we received any objection from an involved agency. And we did not. So there being no objection, the board is free to assume lead agency status. I believe you should do it by motion though.
Right. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to assume lead agency status for this planning board.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion by the board? Mr. Schufell?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
So after we've just made ourselves lead agency.
We haven't yet.
You haven't done that yet.
Well, okay, when do we do that?
All right, you say yes.
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 Okay. Question?
Motion carries unanimously. Now, question.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Mr. Keel said yes.
Okay, so now that we've done this.
Motion carries by four zero.
Now that we've done this, when would they go before City Council for their PDD?
Well, there must be a secret finding before they can do that. No action can be taken on the project until a determination of environmental significance has been made. And that will be made by this board.
Okay, so do we have a specific period of time?
So the, the law says that once the lead agency is established, the, the board, in this case being the board, has twenty days from the time that it deems to have sufficient information to make the determination. So.
Okay.
So if you, you do not have sufficient information yet, obviously, everything isn't covered still. But, but when, once you deem, once you agree that you have sufficient information to make a determination, then the law has you to make, requires that you make that determination within twenty days.
So the next time they come here, can we make our requests? Or do we have to request from the agencies what we need from everybody?
You can make some requests right now to the, to the applicant. Staff notes have a lot of requests in them. I would ask that the board support those to the applicant and, you know, and make sure that they agree to comply with, or to provide those materials that have been requested. And make the corrections.
The boards also, the boards also requested third party review of this application.
Yes.
So that, once we have sufficient material and the deposit that will be sent over to, CHA provided a quote, which I have given to the applicant and also CDM Smith for sewer related stuff.
So would it be at appropriate time now to ask him that we want an environmental impact statement? Or is that done?
No, no, no. So if, if, if the board makes a positive declaration, then there is an entire process which will result in a draft EIS and ultimately a final EIS.
So that's the only way that is done, by declaring a positive declaration?
That, that's correct. If the board finds that there is going to be a significant adverse impact on the environment in any particular area, then an entire process is provided for in the regulations and the law for developing an EIS.
I'm just up here because I thought you were going to ask for something specific. And I wanted to be able to write it down. Yeah, so I can tell you, your, for, our intent is to submit to you in time for your deadline for your next meeting. You will be getting a bunch of things from us, including items that hit on, on the staff comments. You're going to be getting a stack of documents as Mr. Scully just kind of asked for, traffic study, et cetera. So there'll be a number of things, then you can look at them and tell us if you think, as Rick indicated. You know, if you look at it and you say, hey, what about this? I don't see anything on this item. Can you give us something? We can do that.
Well, many of those are, are, many of the things that we will want are already outlined in the staff recommendation. You're aware of those and the O B providing us information on all of those things, right?
Correct. Yes.
And also, ultimately, if this does go out for independent review, which I think you, is something that you've indicated you want, that information, that report, when it comes back, will be part of the information package on which you can base your decision. Or should I say those reports when they come back?
John, just to be sure, the deadline for next month's Monday?
Yeah.
Anything further? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come for the board? Yeah. Eric, is there anything? Eric, is there anything else that you need? Can we adjourn?
No, thank you.
We can't adjourn? We can adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I do not need anything further. Thank you, you may adjourn.
Make a motion. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Discussion, no favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries, meeting's adjourned.